Thanks for joining us here in the council chambers and joining us online at home. We'll start the meeting as we always do with the Pledge of Allegiance. If you're able, please stand and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Once again, welcome to everyone. First order of business tonight is approving our agenda. And just looking at our agenda, we've got, we have introductory items. We were going to talk about the sale of a general obligation fund bonds. And just to preview things, it's very good news on the sale of the bonds today. So that's very good. Our consent business, which Councilmember Dallisandro has this evening, is 19 items. So you're ready. Very good. Very good. Hearings, resolutions, and ordinances. Item 4.1 is the resolution I think everybody is here for regarding ballot language related to the petition for a charter amendment regarding ranked choice voting. I do want to point out and clarify to everyone that it's not a public hearing. This is, it's a discussion among us and we'll be making, we'll be making our decision based off of the staff presentation and the discussion among us, but it's not a public hearing. Item 4.2 is indeed a public hearing, and that's regarding accessory dwelling units. And then we're going to talk about a resolution on item 4.3, a request for an alternate sale process for city-owned properties. Under our organizational business, we're going to talk a bit more about that HRA assessment that we first broached a couple of weeks back, and then our city council policy and issue update. Counsel, anything to add? If not, I would move approval of tonight's agenda.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve tonight's agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 7-0. We have an agenda. We'll move on to item two on our agenda, which is an update on the sale of our general obligation fund bonds of 2022, Series 56. Ms. Economy Sholder, good evening, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Matt's pulling up the presentation for me. So for bond Series 56, this is for our PIR, or Permanent Improvement Revolving. Ready? Does this work better? You're welcome. PIR stands for Permanent Improvement Revolving Fund. And these are special bonds that are specifically for our road improvements that have special assessments attached with them. So the type of bond is a special assessment. And for this one, we approached the city council back in July, early July, to sell bonds for both the 22 projects and the 23 to try and save interest over the, as we both, everyone in the room probably sees the interest rate climbing. At that time, we did a set sale amount of $14,100,000, depending on where the market stood. The amount of principal that we went into the market with this morning was $13,950,000. And with the premium that we received on the bonds, we were able to bring that principal down to $11,875,000. So really good day in the market with that. So again, the bonds are for the road reconstruction. As you see here is a picture of a road reconstruction piece, and this is for, again, the 2022 and 2023 payment management programs. So again, going through that, the $14,100,000 was approved by the city council on July 11th. On July 15th, we had credit rating calls with Moody's, Credit Rating Services, Standard and Poor's, and Fitch. In the next couple of slides, you'll see some of the highlights from those credit reports. And those credit reports are in the agenda materials. And then this morning, we were, went into the market again at the $13,950 and with premium $11,875. One of the other pieces that we looked at, and that we look at annually, is where do we place our three triple As in the country? So currently, we received information from Baker Tilly, our municipal advisor, on Friday that we are, there's only 33 municipal governments, 33. We are at, there were 40 a year ago, and now there's only 33 that maintain all three triple As. Again, 19,500 communities. So really good news. From Fitch, they all look at our local government, and so they see Bloomington as a wealthy and growing local economy. They saw our population grow over the last couple of years. We also have a strong tax base, and there's been revenue growth over the last several years. They also commented that we have sophisticated financial planning. They look at our budgets, they look at how we do the financial planning, they look at our strategic priorities. And then they look at our track record of healthy reserves. So we try to keep our conservative budgets and make sure that our reserves are there to cover resiliency, and should something bad happen, we have reserves to take care of us. Under Moody's, again, they look at, we're part of the Twin Cities and the whole metro. We are considered robust under their terminology in operating revenue credit strength. We have proactive management so that we proactively look at things like, again, the strategic priorities, again, long-term budget planning, and what variabilities are out there in our revenue forecasts. We have strong financial position, and currently we have a very modest debt burden. Even with the debt that we issued today, we have a very modest debt burden. Under Standard and Poor's, again, a very strong economy, and they're looking not only at our city, but metrowide, very strong management, strong institutional framework, positive budget results over the last several years, and strong debt and contingent liability profile. So again, get a little bit into the details. We're doing both 22 and 23 payment management program to do interest same aids. Again, we have a wonderful power amount of $11,875, and we broke it into the amounts for 22 and 23 so that we can track both of those. In the 23 one, we want to make sure for all of the arbitrage and post issuance compliance rules that we're adhering to those. And then the parameters resolution the council approved back on July gave authority to the mayor, the city manager, myself to approve the little bidder. So again, final amount is $11,875. The term is 11 years because we want to capture that 11th year of the special assessments for next year's bonds. The premium that was used to reduce the principal was just under $2 million. And the really cool part about today was the interest rate. About six weeks ago, we were looking at an interest rate of 3.5%. Then we see the market came down a little, and even as of Friday, we thought it would be north of 2.5. So we had 11 bidders. Baker Tilly has not seen 11 bidders on an item in over a year. And so because of the size, and we're a AAA city, and we have a strong credit profile, we got 11 bidders today, and they really sharpened their pencils. So a strong premium reduction and an interest rate of 2.27. So really good day in the market. And that was just informational update for council. The mayor and the city manager and I approved it earlier today, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Economy Sholder. Counsel, any questions? So you mentioned the premium of almost $2 million. Now, I know we've seen premiums in the past. We've never seen a premium.
Mayor and City Council, no. Even last year, with the bonds that were about half the size for the payment management program, that premium was right around $600,000, and that was very high then. So again, being in the market and where the bonds need to be sized and where the interest rate, where the people that buy our bonds needed it to be sold, we had a great premium.
And the 11 bidders, that's impressive also, showing people who want to do business with Bloomington.
Yes, and all of them are high-quality bidders.
Absolutely. Counsel, anything? If not, this is just, this was just an update. And so, thank you, and thank you for a very successful bond issuance today. Very well done. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Move on to item three on our agenda. It's a consent business. As I mentioned earlier, Councilmember Dallisandro has the consent agenda tonight. Councilmember Dallisandro.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would have clapped for that, I'm just saying. I love saving $3 million, absolutely. Okay, so we have our consent agenda, as you mentioned, is 19 items. I have only two holds so far, 3.1, our donation acceptance, and then I know I wanted to hold, and I think at least one other council member wanted to also hold 3.7. So is there anybody else? I'll take those. No? Okay. If there's nothing else, then I will move the consent agenda 3.2 to 3.6, and then 3.8 to 3.19.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Dallisandro, second by Councilmember Martin, to accept the consent business as stated this evening. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 7-0. Why don't we start with item 3.7, and we'll finish up with the donations if we could. So item 3.7, which is the Penn Lake City Homes Change in Condition Resolution. Councilmember Dallisandro, and I think Councilmember Nelson.
Coulter, right. Nelson, you want to hold it?
Coulter.
I know Coulter did, yeah. Okay, great. Yeah, so I'm holding this just because I wanted to make sure people were aware of it. It's on the consent agenda, as I understand, because there's no action for us to do other than approve what we've already discussed a long time. Is that correct? Okay. Yeah, I wanted, I think that everybody who is within 500 feet of the property did get their notices about this, right? Full letters. I know I have received a couple of comments on it as well. Okay. So I don't have any other questions, I just wanted to bring it to people's attention and make sure that they knew that it was on the agenda since it was an item of a bit of interest in the last year or so. Is there anything, Councilmember Coulter, that you want to add to it?
Councilmember Coulter?
I don't have anything else to add. I think it might be helpful to have the city attorney just give a brief sort of explanation of why we're here and why we're taking this particular action.
That's where we were headed next. Mrs. Manderscheid, could you give us a quick rundown on item 3.7, please?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor members. So this action tonight is before you for your consideration pursuant to a court order that was issued in early July in a case where, that was brought against the city arising out of a action that the council took back in May of 2021. There was litigation, and the court ordered the city to approve the item that was before it on May 3 of 2021. We met in closed session, and this item is now appearing before you.
Very good.
The one other, Mayor, I'm sorry, one other item I'll add is that the resolution that's in the packet is essentially what was presented by staff, the recommendation by staff in early May, with the exception of a few whereas's at the very end, which explain how we got to this particular point, i.e. what I just said about the judge ordering it. Otherwise, it's the same resolution.
Councilmember Coulter, anything additional? Councilmember Dallisandro, anything additional?
Nope. I'll move the item 3.7, and then I guess I should read this one. As required by court order in case PL 2021-50 to adopt a resolution approving a change in condition of approval number seven in case number PL 2020-133 to allow an emergency exit-only secondary access to Penn Avenue South for a 15-unit townhome development subject to the conditions listed in the resolution.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Dallisandro, second by Councilmember Lohman, to accept item 3.7 on our consent business. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 7-0. Let's double back to item 3.1, our resolution to accept donations. Councilmember Dallisandro.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, just wanted to acknowledge once again the kind people of Bloomington. They never fail to do all good things to support us. We've got a couple of donations here for our upcoming Bloomington Pride celebration from Transfiguration Lutheran Church, and also Nine Mile Brewing, so thank you to them. And in addition to that, we have wonderful donations on behalf of the very youngest amongst us, bundles of love, and Amanda Lemke providing some much-needed items to the Public Health Department. So thank you to our Bloomington residents for that. And with that, I will make a motion to adopt Resolution 2022, is it number one? I don't know. To accept donations as listed.
Second.
I don't know, it's empty on my paper. I apologize.
That'll work.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, just to make sure we're clear on the record, it's just Resolution 2022, and then we'll fill in the number later.
Fantastic, thank you.
Motion by Councilmember Dallisandro, and second by Councilmember Martin, to accept item 3.1 on our consent business. Of course, offering our thanks and asking staff to send the appropriate thank you letters as well. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 7-0. Moving on to item 4.1, the resolution regarding ballot language related to the petition for a charter amendment. And we first took this up a couple of weeks ago when we accepted the certificate of, what is it called? Certificate of?
Sufficiency.
Sufficiency from our city clerk. And we said we would hold off because we needed a bit more information regarding the language on this. And Ms. Manderscheid, you've got a recommendation for us? Ms. Manderscheid?
Thank you, Mayor members. I have a short PowerPoint presentation, which I thought would be helpful to organize everyone's thoughts. Matt, can you pull that up? All right, next slide, please. So this is a highlight of the timeline that we have been engaged in since the beginning, or since mid-June. We are now at the last bullet point, which is the council's consideration of the ballot language. As the mayor mentioned previously, the council acted last month, a few weeks ago, to accept the clerk's certificate of sufficiency and adopted a resolution pursuant to that. We are now at August 8, and there is a resolution for your consideration in the packet. And so, next slide, please. Again, just as a brief reminder, we've covered this a couple of times. I'm going to focus on the last bullet point, 4.08. The petition that the city received back in June sought to make several amendments to our city charter. One specifically in 4.08 caught our concern from the very beginning in that it sought to require a 2/3 voter approval at a future regular municipal election. As I mentioned at the Charter Commission meeting, I had some concerns about that, and I indicated that we would be seeking an attorney general opinion. Next slide, please. So we did some additional research on that concern, the legal concern that we had, and we also reached out to the Attorney General's office. The, I thought I would briefly describe the law on this particular point prior to the last bullet point about next steps. And that is the, our Minnesota Constitution provides that the legislature, and case law confirms this as well, upholds this, that the legislature is the entity that sets the manner by which charter amendments can be made by charter cities. That particular legislative manner is set forth in Section 410.12 of the state statutes. It specifically states that amendments can be submitted to the voters at either a general or a special election, and then goes on to state in that same subdivision that the threshold for acting on such a charter amendment is 51% of the votes cast on the amendment. This is particularly noteworthy in that there are other provisions in the Charter Chapter that discuss other voting thresholds. For example, you may remember back when we voted on taprooms that required a 55% threshold. There is other language in other parts of the state statutes that talk about other thresholds, so in other relevant sections. The cities are only authorized to put questions on the ballot when we have a legal authority to do so. We can't just put a question on the ballot. There has to be authorization in state statute for us to do so. And in this case, state law says that you can only amend your charter by one of the ways set forth in 410.12, and when doing so by election, it's a 51% threshold. So we reached out to the Attorney General and asked a question about what the law, the controlling law was on this issue. Was it 410.12 that specifically laid out this 51%, or was it a general statute that talked about language of elections that was in 410.21? Because we were concerned that the case law indicates that we cannot put a question on the ballot if it's unconstitutional, inconsistent, or preempted by state law or otherwise inconsistent with public policy. There are a lot of cases on this, and we were concerned that we were, we wanted to act and, we wanted to make a recommendation to you in a manner that was consistent with state law. The Attorney General provides advisory opinions to cities on questions like this, and in fact, provided the city of Bloomington with its opinion on this particular question that we posed, and indicated that we cannot lawfully set a charter amendment requirement, or excuse me, a charter provision requirement that would require a 2/3 approval because state law has already indicated that it's only 51%. This was consistent with a previous opinion that was also included in your materials for the agenda item tonight, which I believe was a city of Chisholm opinion, which talked about a somewhat similar scenario, and the Attorney General's opinion is consistent with its previous opinion in Chisholm. Next slide, please. So here tonight, it is our recommendation from the city attorney's office that you decline to put ballot language on the upcoming ballot. We believe that the proposed language in the petition is unconstitutional and inconsistent and in conflict with the constitutional requirement, as well as the state statutes that I briefly mentioned. It is our recommendation that this particular question does not appear on the November 22 ballot. We also recommend that the clerk retain copies of the resolution and the petition as she would do in her normal course of her position. And then lastly, we seek authorization and direction to take all necessary and appropriate steps, which would be, for example, reviewing the ballot, sample ballot that comes from the county and such other related items arising and related to your action tonight. So there's a resolution in your packet that goes into greater detail on the specifics that I have highlighted tonight. It specifically goes through each of our items that we have indicated are inconsistent or inconsistent with state law in public policy and otherwise unconstitutional. I won't go into all the details of those each tonight because they're in the resolution. I've also included the Attorney's, Attorney General's opinion, which, as I mentioned, includes the prior opinion for the city of Chisholm as an attachment. You'll also note that the resolution that is included in your packet tonight builds on the previous resolution as a relevant background and, in fact, facts to be included in this particular resolution. So with that, I will stand for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Manderscheid. So, question, Ms. Manderscheid. When we accepted the certificate of sufficiency, the petition was put together correctly. I mean, it was, it was formatted correctly, it was, I think, authorized on each page correctly, but this language stood out as what the issue is. So as this, as the petitioners were putting this together, did they bring this petition to your office to get your opinion, to ask if it was good? Would you have given them an opinion? Or did they come to you at all as they were preparing this petition?
Mayor members, the petition language was not reviewed, was not submitted to me for my review. It is not required that I approve it, but it was not submitted to me for review. I will, I will note that when I did receive it, our office immediately flagged that language as something we wanted to look into, given our past research on previous and related items.
So if they had brought it to you, would you have offered an opinion on this? Or, I know you can't give legal advice on this type of thing.
Mayor members, I wouldn't have been able to give a legal opinion because the city is my client on it, but I would have encouraged people, the petitioners, to seek a legal opinion on it, as we often do whenever we have concerns about something that someone brings to our attention, and we oftentimes will provide them with referrals as well.
Thank you. So counsel, I know, I know you've got questions, and we'll get to them in just a minute here. Where's that coming from? Yeah, that's better now, I think. So I did want to point out, the city has meticulously followed the steps necessary on this, from June 21, when the city clerk first received this petition, to the July 7 special meeting of the Charter Commission, to July 13, when the clerk issued the certificate of sufficiency, and then on, I think it was July 18, when we said, yes, it was sufficient. We have very carefully and thoroughly gone through all the specific steps as prescribed by Minnesota state law about how to do this kind of thing. And I think we, we did it because we knew full well that if we didn't do it that way, if we didn't do it correctly, we were going to get called out on it. And rightfully so, because we needed to follow all of that. So, I mean, hats off to our clerk's office and to our legal team for keeping us on track and keeping us between the lines as to where we need to be. And I think it's absolutely imperative right now that we continue that practice, that from a legal standpoint, from a policy standpoint, from a consistency standpoint, I think we need to continue that practice. When we accepted this certificate of sufficiency back on July 18, we said flat out and heard flat out from the attorney that there were concerns and questions about the legality of the language for this petition. And the language requiring 2/3 voter approval for a ballot amendment would be in direct conflict with state law. Direct conflict, which says 51% is what's required for a ballot question. And counsel, I think it would be terribly irresponsible of us to approve this petition tonight and move forward with this for that very reason. It would literally and without question violate state law, and there would be legal ramifications, no doubt in my mind, there would be legal ramifications if we moved forward with this, and certainly if it was on the ballot and ultimately passed, there would be legal ramifications and would, then we'd be putting the city in fiduciary challenge, fiduciary jeopardy there in terms of what we might be facing. So I mean, I just believe fully and strongly that we can't move forward with this tonight. We simply can't. There is, of course, a path forward. Ranked choice voting will not be used this November. It won't be used until next November with the city council and the mayoral elections. The group that submitted the petition in the first place could rewrite the petition correctly this time, get the number of signatures as needed, and submit it again, and then a special election could be considered in the spring, or we could be looking at it on the ballot next November. So frankly, counsel, I think this is pretty cut and dried. I think Ms. Manderscheid laid it out very clearly. I think, I don't see any way that we can put the question on the ballot without being in direct violation of state law at this time. So, counsel, questions? Councilmember Nelson, Councilmember Lohman, and then Councilmember Coulter. Councilmember Nelson.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and I appreciate the way you talked to that. And just want to clarify, so the concerns about the legality of that provision were brought up at the Charter Commission and at the council publicly for people to understand that there were concerns about that. That's right. So there's been notice to people, this isn't the first time they're hearing that there's a concern. Is that accurate?
Mayor members, that's accurate. I placed it on the Charter Commission presentation back in, and I believe that was right after the 4th of July.
July 7, I think.
And so then my other question is, given that there was advance notice of that, have we received any contrary opinion? Has an attorney representing the people brought forth a contrary opinion with a set of legal facts precedent or anything like that for us to consider? And/or is there anything, you know, I don't, I know we're not a public hearing, but, you know, is there, is there a contrary opinion to what we've received, both independently through the Attorney General's office and with our staff?
Mayor members, we have received communications from law firm, from a law firm indicating its concerns with the proposed petition language, and we've certainly received that. We haven't received any information from, any legal communications from the people that are, appear to be in favor of the petition.
Okay. So the only thing I'd further ask, Mayor, is if, and I don't want to open a public hearing, and I know we're not doing that, but if anyone has that information of a contrary legal opinion, like a, you know, that should be considered by this council, you know, I'd like to see it. It seems like we don't have that, and even though there was notice that this was a concern, you know, so I guess I tend to agree with, absent somebody with a different legal opinion, you know, based on all the evidence in the record, it seems like what you recommend is the only path forward at this point. Am I misunderstanding that?
No, councilmember, I would agree with you, and I would agree that since this has been, this was flagged as of the July 7 meeting, that this could be an issue. There, I believe there would have been ample time, there's been ample notice that there are these legal concerns coming forward. We announced when we approved the certificate of sufficiency that we were going to be seeking an opinion from the Attorney General's office regarding this. And so I appreciate your thoughts on this and appreciate the outreach or the possible outreach, but I don't, I don't see a Perry Mason moment here where somebody's going to come forward and say, here it is. Councilmember Lohman? Councilmember Lohman.
Thank you, Mayor. I think you've laid it out quite well, and I, you know, when we brought this forward, I had my concerns about 4.08 initially. Do have some questions, a possible motion here. I do not support the way that this is written, Mayor. I think you've made that clear, and I will not support the way this is written for legal reasons. I'm curious, could this, if this thing gets turned down and it's resubmitted, could this lead to a special election? And then my next question is, what's the cost of a special election?
Mayor members, yes, there are requirements about the timing of when the, how many weeks prior to the election, something like this needs to be submitted, that I believe is in 205. I believe the city clerk is here. And she could speak to the cost and timing.
Good evening, Ms. Campione.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. A special election typically will run between 70 to 85,000, depending on the turnout and the staffing that's required for that.
And since I got you there, how much does a primary election cost?
It's typically about the same. We usually see about the same turnout as we do for a primary. We staff it pretty similarly.
Okay. And then I just wanted to get clarification. I think there was an email earlier today that asked a question. It's my understanding that if there was a unanimous vote of this council, that we could adjust this particular petition and remove the two-thirds or that 4.08 section from the resolution.
Ms. Manderscheid, Mr. Verbrugge.
Mayor members, I'm not, I'm not sure where that idea has come from, the ways that the Charter--
I can read it here exactly how it's been written. Maybe I misunderstood this here. See, 4.1 Resolution Regarding Ballot Language Relating to the Petition for a Charter Amendment. There was a question here by both myself and Councilmember Nelson. Can the city by unanimous vote put a question on the ballot? Can we offer basic language but fix the two-thirds majority for a 51 percent state law? That's what I got from staff. So I just want to make sure that I understand--
Got it.
--that, and then I've got a sub five amendment proposed by council on the process by which to do that. Is that inaccurate, or?
So Mayor members, I believe what you're referring to, Councilmember Lohman, is when amendments are proposed by the council, which is under subdivision five of that statute that I mentioned, 410.12 of state statutes. And that does allow the council to propose charter amendments. The ordinance has to be submitted to the Charter Commission first. If you remember, in the past, when we've talked about charter amendments, we've used the analogy of a tennis match, in that the Charter Commission has an opportunity to participate as well as the city council. So amendments can arise from the Charter Commission as well as from the city council, but in both cases, they go to both bodies.
So, long story short, it'd be impossible for this body to adjust it today and put it on the general election, avoiding a special election or a possible primary election, the cost to the city. That's my biggest concern. So what I'm hearing is, it'd be impossible for that, even if we did that today, to get it on the general election.
Mayor members, the, I believe it would be, given the timing requirements in state law, as well as the requirements for pulling together the Charter Commission, and the notice to the Charter Commission that's required by its rules, which is 10 days, as well as the, some of these notice requirements, I think it would be very difficult to pull that together. The other concern that I have is that we typically spend a great deal of time pulling together those amendments and talking through and researching all of the elements and the ramifications of them. We wouldn't have the opportunity to do that, given, if you were asking us to do it in this very short timeframe, and simply just removing that one part of it. So I would have hesitation from a--
So it's theoretically possible to do it, but it wouldn't be advisable because we may put ourselves in legal jeopardy, not understanding completely what's written in the resolution? Is that what you're saying?
I don't know that it's theoretically possible. I could do the math here. I don't think it's possible, given the notice requirements--
I'll take you at your word that it's not possible to do it with that--
Mr. Verbrugge, something to add?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers, I was just going to try to elucidate the timeline. As I understand what the city attorney has laid out, is that the council has to propose by ordinance this recommendation that's going to the Charter Commission, and for us to do that, there's a public notification, public notice process, and then once the Charter Commission gets it, they have up to 60 days, and they can extend by another 30 days. So they can take up to 90 days to consider what has been forwarded by the city council. And then when it comes back from them, then we have additional process as well. So the timeline for the November ballot is that we have to have all ballot language to the county by the end of this month, a little bit, a couple days earlier, actually, August 26th. So there is no way to accommodate that timeline.
Yeah, no, even if we, and there's no way for us to even tell the Charter Committee that you got to be back in 36 days, so that would be impossible. So with that--
And if I may, just one more, just to reiterate, and I think you clarified this, Councilmember, and I think it was covered before, but I just want to reiterate, the council does not have the authority to change a petition that is presented in front of them. So even if a council was amenable to correcting the two-thirds and just setting it as 51 percent to move forward, you cannot do that because it cannot be presumed that every person who signed that petition would be agreeable to that change. And for that reason, you cannot change a petition once received.
So I think, Mayor, I'm not going to even present a motion because it would be absolutely irrelevant. It wouldn't even work. And I just think we need to be clear about that, and I think we got to be careful about having the city get sued because of this improper thing. I, I, I mean, I don't like the idea of a possible potential special election cost to the city, and also potential if it were to pass, a primary, but my hands are tied. So I think, Mayor, what you've laid out is exactly what we need to do.
Councilmember Coulter.
Thank you, and I will, I'll be quick, but just to clarify, when a charter amendment question comes before the council, who sets at which election that question will be on the ballot? My understanding was that the council makes that decision. Is there, I mean, is there some requirement that if another petition were to come forward, that we would have to have it at a special election or during a primary election date? Or would the council make the decision on which election a charter amendment question would be on the ballot?
Mayor members, I'll defer to Chris, to the city clerk on the specifics, but state law indicates that proposed charter amendments must be submitted at least 17 weeks before the general election. And then there's additional language related to the election on the form and that sort of thing in a subsequent subsection.
Mayor members of the council, I'd need to do a little bit more research to answer with 100 percent certainty, but I believe if they can make the deadlines that are set forth in statute, based on, there are five election dates set in law and when a city can hold an election. And so if they meet the deadline for one of those dates, that would be a special election date where we're not typically meeting or holding an election, I believe we would need to hold the election on that date.
Okay, okay, thank you. That's helpful to know. I just, really just kind of want to make sure I'm understanding sort of the train of thought when it comes to the law on this, because I looked it up, and the state constitution says amendments to city charters may be proposed and adopted in any other manner provided by law. And then in the Attorney General's opinion, they reference a state Supreme Court ruling that holds that the constitution, by that language essentially, it says authorizes a legislature to fix the percentage of votes required to carry amendments to a city charter. So just to make sure I'm sort of tracking this all correctly, between that, Article 12 of the state constitution, and I just bumped the page, that case ruling, essentially the law states that the legislature and the legislature alone is responsible for setting the percentage by which charter amendments can be deemed to have passed. Am I correct in understanding that?
Mayor and members, Councilmember Coulter, that is correct.
Thank you. And just to clarify, you referenced this previously, but when we passed the Buring Tap Room Amendment, that required 55 percent, and you referenced other sort of various requirements that raised that threshold, but those are all very specific circumstances. In state law, it says, you know, essentially, an amendment question related to this certain thing must pass with this certain threshold. So there's not, there's not any allowance in state law for sort of arbitrarily raising or lowering that threshold, depending on what petitioners may want. Am I correct in understanding that?
Correct, Mayor members. And it's noteworthy that this particular 51 percent was actually previously amended by the legislature. As initially drafted, it was 55 percent, and in subsequent years, I believe it was in the 60s, they amended it to 51 percent. So it was a very intentional choice by the legislature to set this threshold.
Thank you. So, like I said, I just, I kind of wanted to just sort of clarify that line of thinking and make sure I understood it, and at the risk of sort of repeating what other folks have said, I think it would be not only inappropriate, but I think it would be, I'm not a lawyer, but I, it certainly sounds to me like it would be illegal to put this question on the ballot. And, you know, I think there may be something to be said for having a higher threshold to approve city charter amendments. It is our city's sort of constitution. I personally think there should be a higher threshold to pass state constitutional amendments as well, but that's a battle for a different day, I suppose. But the law is what it is now, and we as the city council are not permitted to change it. So I will be supporting staff's recommendation that we not forward language.
Council, additional questions? Councilmember Lohman?
I do have just two last questions, and I'd be happy to make this motion, too. Just to make sure that I'm clear, absolutely clear here, no way to separate this resolution out at all, separate the two-thirds from the rest of it.
Mayor members, there is not a method by which you could accomplish that, no, with the petition submitted.
Then Attorney General, that's just an opinion, right? I mean, but it's, you know, from the top attorney from the state. So could you, just for a moment, just talk just briefly about what that means and how we look at that, or how that affected the staff's recommendation?
Mayor members, the Attorney General issues, has the jurisdiction to issue advisory opinions to cities, and we have on occasion sought counsel from the Attorney General on issues of statutory interpretation. We have also in the past sought guidance when the, there are questions about how to interpret a statute. The Attorney General has, for many decades, issued opinions that are, provide a lot of great and helpful guidance to cities and political subdivisions. So it was appropriate that we reach out and seek guidance from the AG on this particular item.
Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor. Just two quick follow-up questions from Councilmember Lohman's comments. The Attorney General, the elected individual, was not the one to issue this opinion, is that correct? It came from the Attorney General's office? Obviously, he's in charge of that office, but this was a professional staff person, not a political elected official that made this decision. Is that accurate?
Mayor members, this opinion was issued by Assistant Attorney General Jacob, I believe it's pronounced Campione, I'm not sure exactly.
He's in the record now. And last question I have, is nothing we do here tonight precludes us as a council staff from working with those that have sought and did the initiative to take the, and get signatures for this, to working with them to come up with corrected language, and then at some future date, us considering submitting that to the Charter Commission if we wanted to? This doesn't preclude that in any way? We can, we could work with them to just fix it and move it forward at such time as it makes sense?
Mayor members, the action tonight would not preclude future action on rank choice voting.
Okay. Thank you. Council, anything additional? Council action? I will make a motion, Council, to adopt a resolution regarding ballot language relating to the petition for a charter amendment, and I want to specify what the language does say in the "now therefore" part of this resolution. It does say that "now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Bloomington, Minnesota, that based on the foregoing recitals that are incorporated and restated by reference, number one, the petition is rejected as manifestly unconstitutional and inconsistent and in conflict with the Minnesota Constitution and Minnesota statutes. And, number two, a question for the petition cannot be placed on the November 2022 general election ballot. And, number three, the city clerk is directed to retain this resolution, along with the petition, as an official record of the City of Bloomington. And finally, number four, city staff are authorized and directed to take all necessary and appropriate steps to carry out the intent of this resolution."
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the language as stated. Any further council discussion on this? Seeing none? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Thank you to our legal staff for their work on this. Thank you to our city clerk. Thanks to the folks for bringing it forward and for being here with us tonight, and I hope there is the understanding how this is moving and why it's not moving forward, very simply. So thanks for being here with us. We will move on to item 4.2 in our agenda. This is a public hearing tonight. Actually, why don't we take just a couple minutes and let the crowd clear a little bit, if we could, before I call item 4.2. All right, we will call item 4.2, which is a public hearing regarding accessory dwelling unit ordinance amendment. And we have with us tonight, I think for the first time, Thomas Ramler Olson from the Planning Department. I don't take this personally, that they all left. I mean, that's a-- [laughter] I wouldn't take this personally, and she was going to stick around, the other two are leaving as well, I'm sorry, but welcome. Good to have you in front of us for the first time, and looking forward to the presentation.
Thank you. Not the first time I've cleared a room. Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, members of the city council, before you is an ordinance update to our accessory dwelling unit standards in city code. And I thought I'd just offer a brief refresher on what they are and what they're not. I set up some contrasts on this slide. Simply put, it's adding an additional dwelling unit or living space on a property, so it needs to be on the same lot as a principal dwelling unit or a main home, and it needs to provide all the facilities that a home provides, cooking, sleeping, sanitary. And as I said, it needs to be subordinate to that main home. What they are not, and I set this distinction on purpose, so if you'd like to inquire further, I'm happy to discuss it, is that they are not tiny homes and they're not mobile homes. And visualize, this is what they look like. There's two, it's essentially two ADU types. There are those that are attached or within a principal home, or they are separate. And as you can see, those that are interior or attached are already allowed by code. Those that are not are the detached, and that's being addressed with this ordinance update, or amendment, I'm sorry. Some background, the start in 2009, when the ADU ordinance was adopted, again, only allowed interior or attached ADUs. It's been revised-- It's been revised, as you can see, in 2019. However, since 2009, only two ADUs have been approved and only one constructed. So with that, I believe in 2019, staff was given some direction to explore some revisions to the ordinance, to encourage or to, to see if there were any barriers to a broader adoption and construction of ADUs. That kicked off last year in October. There's been some study sessions, as you may recall, from February with you all, and then Planning Commission and HRA last October. Staff has also been engaging people through a variety of means, so we've been collecting some good feedback. And what's been guiding this ordinance update has been four objectives. Those are to increase affordable housing opportunities, expand opportunities for aging in place, and adjusting for, you know, life cycle for, for aging residents, creation of rental space so that it could be rented out, and it could be, could actually gain additional income for those property owners, and to create new housing units, and while also controlling for any impacts that it might have on a neighborhood. There are several key changes. I've highlighted them on this slide. The one I think we ought to focus on is the detached ADUs. That's the most significant. But there are several changes, and I'm happy to go into those details if you'd like. So with detached ADUs, there are some things to highlight about how we crafted the amendment with regard to those detached ADUs. Height, they can't exceed the height of the primary dwelling unit. Area of the detached ADU, plus it doesn't count toward the maximum accessory structure area allowed on a residential property. It does count toward the number of accessory structures. So right now, that's capped at two detached accessory structures. So if you already had one, or actually, if you already had two, and you wanted to add a detached accessory structure, you wouldn't be allowed by code. So that would exceed the number. And then setbacks, it has to meet all the setbacks of the primary dwelling unit, nuisance subject to all the standards applicable to single-family dwellings. So that's controlled already through standards in the city code. On, on the 14th, there was a public hearing held at the Planning Commission meeting. There was no public testimony received. We did receive one email from an ADU builder, and I believe that was part of the packet where the, this particular ADU builder offered some suggested revisions to the draft ordinance. We are considering some of them, but the two that we adopted related to and, and revise the ordinance accordingly, just had to deal with simplifying the application process. Again, making this an easier process for those that are interested in detached, or just ADUs in general. We chose to hold off on some of those other suggested revisions until we could do more research, or if there was other guidance provided by counsel. And then the Planning Commission recommended approval, seven zero, at that public hearing. I have recommended language before you tonight with approval of the ordinance, and then authorizing the summary publication of the ordinance. And with that, I can take any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Ramler Olsen. Counsel, questions on this? Councilmember Delisandro?
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Why doesn't a tiny home, in the sense of a, its structural elements qualify as a legal ADU? What are the material differences between them that would, would preclude you from buying a tiny, tiny home? From Amazon, because apparently you can do that, I had no idea, and just putting it down? Like, what's the, what's the requirement there, or the difference?
Mayor, Councilmember, that's a good question. Yeah, it's, it's appropriate to highlight those distinctions. I have some images up here. On the left is a tiny home. It's, it's a representative example, but nonetheless, their, staff's understanding is that they're usually stereotypically, they're on wheels, so that means they're mobile. They're not hooked up to utilities. They may not become fitted with all the facilities that are needed to meet building code. So in that way, they kind of fall short. And that's, it's, well, we don't have to get into the manufactured home part, but I thought, but hopefully that answers your question.
It does. Mayor, just, just to follow up, then, sir, the, if you bought a tiny home and then you brought it up to code, not a problem. Is that fair? I mean, because it's, so it's not the structure, it's the things about the structure, it potentially being on wheels, it potentially not having the right plumbing situations, those kinds of things that are precluding it. Is that correct?
Mayor, Councilmember, we have some suggest, we have some language modifying the definition. This gets into the definition of what we're considering to be an ADU now. So it's being changed from what it currently is, and it's also being made consistent throughout code. There were several parts where the definition was listed. And as part of that definition update, we added language to, to exclude those structures that are on a chassis, or that are mobile, essentially. So that means if, you know, they can be picked up and they can be moved. Granted, it's, for some structures, if you're hooked up to utilities, it's kind of hard to move, but nonetheless, it's not technically impossible. So if they were to, I, I guess I'd be speculating, but if they were able to remove the structure from whatever made it mobile, and firmly affix it to a foundation, hook it up to utilities, and make sure that they're providing all the facilities that are needed for, to meet building code, then technically, that could count as an, as an ADU.
Thank you.
Counsel, additional questions? Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor. Quick question with regards to, there was a note about rental units, and I just wanted to clarify that this does not in any way change short-term rental housing or anything like that in the city. This would only be what's currently allowed, long-term rental-type units. Is that accurate?
Mayor, Councilmember, that is accurate. We haven't changed anything with regard to short-term rentals, so it's expected that this would be long-term rentals.
Okay.
If, if it was a rental space. I apologize.
Yeah. And, and you would not need a rental for immediate family members to live there? Is that accurate as well?
Mayor, Councilmember, yes, that's accurate.
Okay. And then to Councilmember Delisandro's thing, and to your point, pretty much all houses are movable. There are house movers. It's just a matter of how much effort it takes. So I, I think it comes down to the affixed-to-the-ground portion of it, from my, from my experience. So having moved one house before, so it's an interesting process, so, thanks.
And I'd like to hear the stories someday. Counsel, additional questions? Councilmember Loman?
So just one, one quick question. I see that under accessory dwelling units, the strike through, I'm not sure what section is, 1903 in the definitions, be subordinate in size to the single-family dwelling unit. I see that that's scratched out. I'm just curious about the history behind, behind that, that, that particular part of the, of the ordinance.
Apologies, Mayor, Councilmember.
1903 is just under definitions, under accessory dwelling units?
Okay. I thought I, thought I had the definition.
Maybe you didn't bring it all. I can read.
I didn't bring it all. I apologize. Mayor, Councilmember, could you repeat the question one more time?
Let me read it out again. It just, it's under accessory dwelling units. A secondary dwelling unit is, and then, you know, it kind of goes into this definition, physical attached or within a single-family dwelling unit. And then B, which is where my question is, the subordinates in size to the single-family dwelling unit, and then goes on C, the full, separated from the single-family dwelling unit, goes on and on there. But I'm just curious about that B part, in terms of being subordinate to the single-family home. Just a little bit about the history, about why that was there, and as we eliminate that, any impact at all? I'm assuming that's taken care of somewhere else, but I, I just, I mean, I can't imagine there being anything like that, but I just, I'm just curious about that.
Certainly. Mayor, Councilmember, I, I'm not too intimately familiar with the history of how it was drafted back in 2009. That might have, that might have complained, or contained that provision in its definition. Definitionally, it's going to be subordinate in size. We set the, the floor area of the accessory dwelling unit to be 33% of the, so when you total it all together, maybe by math, or example, I can, I can clearly illustrate it. So if you have a 800-square-foot home, you could have a 400-square-foot, a 400-square-foot ADU. So total together, that ADU of, that 400 feet of the 1,200 feet, it can't exceed 33%. So it couldn't have been 410 square feet.
We get to it in another way, is what you're saying, and that's fine. I just wanted to just, I just wanted to understand how that, how that got there, how do we, and so we're dealing with it in a different way. And so I just wanted to understand that, of course, that raises, raises other issues, and of course, with your primary house. So I always, the next question that, that comes to my mind is, so what, you know, you know, if you increase the primary size of your house, then, of course, you could increase that accessory dwelling unit? I mean?
Mayor, Councilmember, conceivably, you could. There are other, there are other standards by which we control, control impervious surfaces on lots, bulk. We have height limits, we have setbacks, so there are some constraints about where that could go, but conceivably, you could increase the size of your home, and then therefore have a bigger ADU.
So I just wanted to just be sure that staff felt comfortable, you know, given the, you know, the reduction of that. I mean, and that just gets to my other, other, other points, but I appreciate that. If staff feels comfortable with that, I'm good with it, too.
Councilmember Martin, and then Councilmember Carter. Councilmember Martin?
Thank you, Mayor. Just real briefly, because Councilmember Loman got to most of what I was wondering about, but then, so considering part of it, it sounds like the, the guidelines to make sure we're not filling up lots with these accessory structures, is that impervious surface area, and ensuring that we're not covering up the whole lot with structures, I guess? So then, as people are planning out these accessory dwelling units, any paved paths or driveway extensions or anything like that to reach the ADU? I'd seen a few of them were over-expanded garages. That then needs to be factored into that impervious surface area calculation as well?
Mayor, Councilmember, that's exactly correct.
Okay. Thank you very much. That's, that's all, Mayor.
Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just wondering if you could talk a little bit more about the parking change? I can just imagine that there will be some residents who, you know, if there are more vehicles consistently parking on the street in front of their house, they may have concerns. And so I would just appreciate a little bit more on the parking piece of this.
Yes, Mayor, Councilmember, the parking technically hasn't changed. We're, we're, we're referencing it instead of having the standard embedded within chapter or section 21, or the current ordinance section. So we're, we're still maintaining that space needed for two vehicles, two vehicles in a garage, and then being able to park two more vehicles on site. That, or if it's a, what's, it could be a one-stall garage with the option to, with the ability to expand the garage to include another stall. So we haven't abandoned those standards yet. However, we felt it appropriate because right now, staff is looking into studying those parking standards for single-family homes. And if those change, then it's just one section that doesn't need to be amended and perhaps create other conflicts. So it was just about ease of use, more than anything, and knowing that there was this potential amendment with the, the study of single-family parking.
Okay. That makes sense. Thank you.
So when we've discussed this in the past, one of the questions that I had was the concentration. Where, where would folks be able to have ADUs in the city? Based on lot size, based on zoning, based on how it would all work? And I think, I, I know in the staff report, there was, there were at least a couple of maps. Wondering if you could just share some of what you learned in terms of that? I think I saw, as you were working your way through your slides here, there was at least one slide showing a map. Just to get a better idea of who we're talking about, what parts of town we're talking about, and what the concentrations might be.
Certainly. Thank you, Mayor. Actually, the maps are right here. This first map shows properties based on the assessor data that have one-stall garages. So this gives you the, an idea of the geographic distribution of properties that have one-stall garage. What it does not show you is those properties that could expand that garage to include another stall space, so there needs to be that caveat in mind. But you can clearly see that it's mainly concentrated around the older lots in East Bloomington, where just standards have changed over time to include a two-stall garage. So those properties would, conceivably, again, if they're not able to expand, then they would not qualify to have an ADU on their property. This is a, another map showing those properties that have an impervious surface amount of 30% or more. This is based on planimetric data that staff has. So there's some, there's some caution to, to view this through a cautionary lens, because it's not maybe the most accurate, but nonetheless, this give you, gives you an idea of the geographic distribution of those lots that have an impervious surface amount of 30% or more. 30% is used because, actually, it's 35%, 35% is the, the limit. We're showing 30% because that means if they were to add an ADU and any other relevant impervious surface, walk, walking path, patio, or if extending a driveway to, to an ADU, then that would maybe push them over 35%. So we just wanted to highlight those properties that are already at 30%. And that same data, we've overlaid on top of census tracts that show the proportion of the population that is, that identifies as BIPOC. So this gets into equity concerns about, you know, what properties are able to have ADUs? Where, where are those properties concentrated? How does it affect the local population? Do they get to share in the benefits of having this new ordinance and, you know, possibly construct an ADU on their property? You can see on the west side, there's considerably more opportunity, and that also coincides with a lower share of the population that's BIPOC within those census tracts. I guess it's worth also bringing up that Commissioner Cookton from the, from the July 14th meeting, did bring up the point that it does, it may offer more opportunities to rent on the west side. And so deconcentrating renter populations on the east side and allowing them to live on the west side may also prove beneficial. So that's something to consider. Something to note is that with the parking standards that are being evaluated, there is also impervious surface cover standards that are also being studied. For instance, two-family, lots with two-family dwellings can possibly exceed 35% impervious cover, but that has to come with the approval from the city engineer to make sure that they're treating stormwater on their property with a variety of interventions, making sure that they can just prove that there's treating stormwater on the property. So there is a chance to even increase the amount of lots that could accommodate an accessory dwelling unit. But that's all being studied at the moment.
Well, thank you for that. I, I thought it was important to have that as part of the conversation. I think it, it adds some context to what we're talking about, and I appreciate your, your willingness to include that. Counsel, anything additional? Don't see any hands going up. So I will open this public hearing. This is a public hearing on item 4.2, and it's a public hearing regarding accessory dwelling unit ordinance amendment. Is there anyone here in the council chambers who wishes to speak to item 4.2 this evening? Don't see anyone coming forward. Matt, do we have anyone on the phone who wishes to speak to item 4.2?
Mayor, we have no one on the line.
Last call for anyone in the chambers? Counsel, seeing no one coming forward, I look for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second? Got a motion by Councilmember Coulter, second by Councilmember Martin, to close the public hearing on item 4.2. No further counsel discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Counsel, questions, thoughts on this? We have, we, we have talked about this a while. I think the, the initial ordinance that we passed in 2009, and realizing that we need, we need to make some adjustments if we want to actually embrace and move forward with accessory dwelling units, given that the ordinance we passed a few years back really didn't have the intended consequences that we were hoping to see. So additional thoughts or ideas, discussion items or action? Councilmember Nelson? And then Councilmember Coulter. Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just curious if we know from other cities that have implemented more of these types of proposals, what they're seeing? Are they, they getting more traction than Bloomington did with its? Because I think our first iteration was to try to create these within the existing structure, and that obviously didn't take off. I mean, both of them are probably great, but, you know, I, I'm just wondering what we've seen in other communities, and, and, you know, how widespread is this adopted? I think that- I think that frankly cuts both ways in terms of providing necessary housing that people can afford, but also, you know, respecting the concerns of neighborhoods of not having too many of these in their neighborhood. I'm assuming they're not, you know, on even close to the majority of lots, so.
Mr. Ramler Olson or Mr. Markergard, any insights? Have you heard from any of your colleagues in other communities that have moved a little bit differently on this?
Sure. Mayor Boosie, councilmember Nelson, we have talked with quite a few other cities and there are many that have made a lot more traction, as you put it, in terms of adding accessory dwelling units. And many of them do allow detached dwelling units. So we don't think we'll see a run on ADUs in the city, but we do think the numbers will increase with this amendment tonight.
Councilmember Colter.
Excuse me, thank you, Mayor. I just really wanted to thank staff for this. I know this is something that we have talked about for a number of years. And I think it's a really creative approach to addressing the issue of affordable housing that we spent a lot of time talking about as well. And I think it's also worth noting, while I'm not obviously one of those folks who believes deleting sections of city code is particularly good always, I think it's, it's helpful that a lot of the work done in this ordinance is done by just doing that, by simplifying what is already in city code and, and making it just more user friendly for everyone all the way around. So I think this is something that's going to serve the community well. I think it's going to address in particular, older folks, residents who want to, as was mentioned, age in place, which we are certainly going to have more of in the coming years here in Bloomington. So unless anyone else has come, oh, it looks like.
Councilmember Lohman and councilmember De La Sandro. Councilmember Lohman.
I apologize. Just a thought occurred to me, and you were making a great move, and I was moving that way to get this thing done with. Just a question. With respect to parking in RVs, how does that work with this? I'm just kind of curious. So I got the, I know, I mean, I shouldn't even ask this, but I gotta ask it now because it's too late after we pass it. If I've got the four, you know, cars there and I got an RV, how does that count? Does that count as two cars, one car, doesn't count? How does that, how does that relate to this? Help me understand if I've got an RV in my, in my driveway, how does, how does it relate to this ADU or no impact at all? Can I have two RVs? I don't know, I just, just curious how this would.
Mayor Boosie, councilmember Lohman, in terms of the RV ordinance, for one thing, you can have RVs in your rear yard in certain locations if they meet the standards. However, the ordinance does not allow them to be occupied. In other words, you cannot live in the RV. So there's that aspect of it. Also, an RV could not qualify as an ADU.
No, no, I get that. I'm not going down that route. I think we've covered all that. I guess my question is, let's say I build an ADU in the, you know, detached ADU. Okay, now I've got the standard theoretically of four cars and I have an RV. How does that work with that? I mean, so if I have that RV, you know, parked there, how does that operate with, within our rules?
Sure.
So can I have the RV plus the four? Or do I park my two cars on the, on the front street and I put my RV in the, in the driveway?
Mayor Boosie, councilmember Lohman, so you bring up the fact that there's a limit on the number of vehicles outside of a garage.
Yeah, and I just wonder, how are we gonna, how are we gonna handle that? You know, you got the RV and you got this ADU. How does that work from an enforcement? I mean, I mean, is that not, not an issue? I mean, I'm just, it just occurred to me, I don't know, I'm just.
Mayor Boosie, councilmember Lohman, so the ordinance before you, before you tonight would not change anything about the number of vehicles allowed outside of a garage? The one impact it could have is if you had an ADU, you may have additional vehicles present on the site. It would count against that overall number, whether or not they were an RV, they would count towards that.
So you could basically have three cars plus an RV and that would be the four, right? Is that, is that the way I'm understanding it?
Mayor Boosie, councilmember Lohman, that's, that's my understanding.
And I just thought the intent was to, you know, if you have this other unit there that you'd provide two, two cars for that. I mean, from a sustainability standpoint, I could care less, but, but I just, I just wanted to be sure that we're not, and maybe there is no problem here, but I just, you know, look to you, Mayor, you know, just, you know, is there any conflict with that? Are we creating an issue down the line when we do that, when we combine those two? Or maybe I'm just seeing something that's not there.
I don't know if you're seeing something that's not there, but I, we might be headed down the road of over complicating something that doesn't, isn't necessarily that complicated because I think as, as Glenn has been pointing out, as we've gone here, there are different provisions already in place in city code for all of the different variables that you've been talking about, whether it's, whether it's the RV, the number of cars parked outside, that kind of thing. So I think it would, it's something that obviously we need to keep an eye on and it's, it will increase parking requirements in an area if there's additional residents on that, on that lot. But I don't think it's, it's as complicated as we, as we, we need to make it. All right. Councilmember De La Sandro.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was, I wanted to understand how we plan to reconcile what I think those maps kind of showed as a, as a, as a bit of a, I don't know if, I don't want to call it a inherent conflict, but the idea that by nature, the, the areas where from a, from a rental income perspective, residents might benefit the most is, is the place where these ADUs are the toughest potentially to fit. On the other side, you have in the, in the other areas, you have dense, a lack of density that could be improved for the city in places where the income is maybe, you know, somewhat less relevant. Are we planning on, is there a, a marketing approach or a, or is there any kind of expectation from an education perspective to the city that we will, as we launch this thing, should it get approved tonight, where we would have conversations in those areas under those different perspectives, right? Which is, you know, goal number one on the east side, if you will, may be A, and goal number two on the west side may be B, right? How do we plan to approach that, should this pass tonight in terms of education and outreach to the community? Maybe we don't know that yet, but I'd be curious to know how we might reconcile that, given the information we have.
I think it might be the case of not knowing that yet. I don't know that we're that far in the planning or that far in the consideration of all of this. The fact that it hasn't passed yet, I think is part of it also. And the practicalities of reconciling it, I agree. I mean, we're just looking at the maps. We can see that, yes, it's going to affect one area differently than it affects others. And one thing that it just, it keeps coming to mind, what Mr. Markergard said, I don't know that we're going to see a huge run on ADUs in the city of Bloomington. I would be surprised if we would just because of, it's a free market kind of thing. It's, it's not a requirement. It's if you want to put one on your house or in your backyard. It's not a requirement to do so. And so I think it's a, it will be a combination of where it's possible to do, if you want to do it in the first place and, and ultimately, if, for that matter, if you can afford to. I mean, it costs a million dollars to buy a two by four now. I mean, it's a, I mean, it's, it's, so it's a good question and it's why I asked about, specifically about the maps, so we could bring this up and consider this as well. I honestly, personally don't know, don't believe that, as Glenn said, there's not going to be a huge run. I think we'll see a modest increase in this, but it will be interesting to see the increase and how it plays out and, and how it works. And I think as we've shown over the past three years, when we additionally, when we initially adopted this in two thousand nine, we realized it didn't work and we made tweaks. And I think we could, we'd want to consider that as we move forward as well. I don't think this, this isn't carved and granted. I think if we, if we have opportunities to improve on it, I think we absolutely will and we should.
Well, let me ask a follow up related to that then. Is, are these kinds of improvements, if you will, eligible for some of the programs that we have, you know, for our lower income residents, for example? Would, would you consider this a redevelopment activity, for example? Not that I notice Ms. Coleman here, and maybe she has opinions on this topic. I don't know, I don't want to bring that in.
She's certainly our next two.
Yeah, yeah, for sure. But, you know, I'm wondering if we consider, you know, some of our programs, redevelopment programs and things like that, would, would, would we be able to consider this as an option for what someone might like to do?
Again, we'd have to ask them. Don't know if it's been that far through in terms of, you know, with that deep of tentacles in terms of what we're doing and how it all fits. But I think you're bringing it up, certainly puts the grain of thought into somebody's mind about the possibility here.
So I guess the only other question is, does this go into effect immediately then if, if we pass it tonight? Or is it something that you would have time to take that, those, like, you know, make a plan, I guess?
I guess I haven't dug deep enough into it. Glenn, what's the effective date on this?
Mayor Boosie, councilmember De La Sandro, it would go into effect upon publication.
Okay.
Which would be Thursday after this week, not this week, but the following.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
But I do think it's a legitimate question to bring up and have staff consider it, whether it's, whether it's in the HRA or, or within our development, which we're going to be talking about next and where it might, where it might make the most sense. So, all right. Counsel, additional questions, comments on this? Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of quick comments. One, I think most of these would be related parties doing that. It doesn't seem like if you're going to get into the rental business, this is the most cost effective way to do it. You're probably better off buying one of the houses that's for sale and renting that out than trying to build this in your yard. So I think most of the time I've seen these, they're, they're people that know each other that, that need some extra space, multi generational living, which I do think brings up a concern in terms of multi generational living within those smaller lots on the east side and finding opportunities and things like that. So the thing I'd ask to, kind of to councilmember De La Sandro's point is that, you know, staff consider a, a time at which it reviews this, you know, whether it be two years or three years or see how it's working, see what we're seeing in terms of rental, related parties, number of units, things like that, because I do think there's some opportunities for us to learn. You know, this is new. I think it's good. I think it's a good step to, to provide this for people. And I, I think that, you know, I candidly know, there are a lot of people in West Bloomington in two story houses that, you know, are struggling with steps and things. And if they could have a multi generational living opportunity within that that was safe and secure for them, it would be very beneficial. I think there's a lot of people within the community that struggle with housing costs. And this provides more opportunity. So I appreciate staff's work on this. And I guess my only point to follow up is, you know, let's keep that front and center and see what we need to learn from this because it's kind of, kind of new for us.
I think that's an absolute legitimate request, then twenty-four, thirty-six months, whatever you think is most appropriate. If we could hear back how the thing, how the program is going. Councilmember Colter.
Thank you, Mayor. I, unless, I'm going to try this again now, unless there are any last comments.
Councilmember Colter.
And move to adopt an ordinance amending chapters nine, fourteen, nineteen and twenty-one and appendix A of the city code related to accessory dwelling unit standards. Second.
Motion by councilmember Colter, second by councilmember De La Sandro to adopt the ordinance amending chapters nine, fourteen, nineteen and twenty-one and appendix A of the city code related to accessory dwelling unit standards. No further counsel discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed motion carries seven zero. Councilmember Colter.
Thank you, Mayor. I will move to approve a resolution authorizing summary publication of an ordinance amending chapters nine, fourteen, nineteen and twenty-one and appendix A of the city code related to accessory dwelling unit standards.
Motion by councilmember Colter, second by councilmember De La Sandro for summary publication. No further counsel discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed motion carries seven zero. Thanks to staff on this. This has been a long journey that we've been on here and we'll be interested to see how this plays out over the next two or three years and curious to see how it all works. So, well done. So thank you. Moving on to item four point three on our agenda. This is regarding a resolution that we'll be considering for the Right of Way Acquisition Loan Fund. I don't know that I've seen the acronym RALPH before, but it's the Right of Way Acquisition Loan Fund. Ms. Coleman is here with us this evening. Good evening, welcome.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor, City Council. I do have a brief presentation just to walk through this item. Matt, if you could pull that up? Thank you. Thank you, next slide. So I'm here this evening with a request for an alternative sale process for the city-owned land that is a part of the RALPH program, which is the Right of Way Loan Acquisition Fund. So that fund is actually managed by the Met Council, acts as a lender in coordination with Minnesota Department of Transportation, MNDOT. And the funds are used to purchase land slated for future highway projects. So all the parcels are adjacent to highways and/or freeways. Bloomington has twenty-two lots in this program. Five lots are being, are released as clear to sell following RALPH requirements. The city currently has a process that we must, that we require soliciting sealed bids for this process, and I am here to request an alternative process for that. Next slide. So I've previously mentioned that there are RALPH program requirements. This is what Met Council requires as the lender. And in order to start along the process of disposing of and or marketing the land that they are releasing, we must first have independently conducted appraisals by an independent appraiser that is approved by the Met Council. We must do title search on the property. The Met Council must approve the proposed land disposal process, the schedule and the appraisals, and the Met Council must approve of the open marketing plan and purchase agreement, all prior to marketing any property or going through any process. None of these things have we done yet because we are first coming to city council to bring you along and also to ask your approval for an alternative sales process. Next slide. So the lots in question, the five lots of the twenty-two that are clear to sale are actually highlighted in green on this map. And their addresses are eight four four zero Humboldt, eight four four two Humboldt, eight four four six Humboldt, eight four five two Humboldt, and then twelve ten eighty-second Street. So four of the, three of the lots are contiguous. And then there's one lot and there's a whole nother lot on the west side of the freeway. So that's thirty-five, that bold line is thirty-five W. And to the east are the four lots and to the west is the one green lot that is clear to sale, which we are only asking for these five lots in particular. The other lots are still being held either for the I ninety-four ninety-four vision, water resources, and then there is one purple lot that you can't see because it's at the bottom, but that's ninety-eighth and Aldrich, in which we are currently undergoing a traffic study to request approval from Met Council, depending on the results of that traffic study on if we can release that lot from MNDOT. Next slide. So I had mentioned in the staff report that a part of this request is in line with our Forward 2040 Comprehensive Plan, as well as our Bloomington Together Tomorrow? Bloomington Tomorrow Together? Wait, I always get it wrong, sorry. Bloomington Tomorrow Together Strategic Plan. So as it refers to our 2040 Comprehensive Plan, this is specific to section three of that plan, the housing element, where we strive and say that we will increase the supply and access to affordable housing, both new and preservation of existing affordable units, where we will foster housing stability and where we will increase the supply of housing overall. Additionally, what we do call out in the 2040 Comprehensive Plan is our partnerships with West Hennepin Affordable Housing Land Trust, better known as WALT, and Habitat for Humanity. WALT actually does receive funding through CDBG, so it is allocated every year by this body, of seventy-five thousand dollars per property, up to two properties a year. Prior to last year, WALT only looked at acquiring and rehabilitating and reselling those properties to affordable. and reselling those properties to affordable, for affordable homeownership, which is capped at 80% area median income. They are now moving forward with the ability and the interest to develop. So they would like to purchase lots and develop new housing in Bloomington. At $75,000 per property, WALT has expended all of the 2019 award and 2021. So in the 2021 year, they did three properties in Bloomington. And that was at $225,000 that they were able to leverage $570,000 from our $225,000 for three properties. And the properties that they did were all estate homes, where the sellers welcomed the opportunity to sell the land. And they also rehabbed the homes with, excuse me, they rehabbed the homes up to sustainability and energy standards. They had a little bit more information about who benefited. One of them was a single father with children, and the other two were traditional families with multiple children, that they are now able to purchase and own a home in Bloomington, where two of them were already in Bloomington, and now they're able to stay. So again, continuing that work, not only with CDBG, but with also the opportunity of having control of city-owned land to offer more opportunities for affordable homeownership. Habitat for Humanity is also called out in our 2040 Comprehensive Plan, because the HRA in particular partners with Habitat for Humanity. We have not been able to partner in the last couple of years. The last one that Habitat completed was in 2020. But they have a strong interest. We've actually met with Habitat, talk with, when I say we, Glenn Markagard and myself, sorry. We've actually met with them and talked with them a couple of times. And they have a very strong interest in these sites in particular. And they would love to get back into Bloomington to provide affordable homeownership opportunities. Next slide. And then our Bloomington Together Tomorrow. The mission to cultivate an enduring and remarkable community where people want to be. This recommendation, the staff request, actually specifically aligns with the strategic objective number two, where the city will achieve significant improvement in the indices measuring the community's environmental and individual health. As we know, that environmental is both the natural and the built environment. And then individual health, as we do know, that this is housing, are a part of social determinants of health. Strategy number three, identifying aligned efforts across organizations in the community to leverage, develop, and maximize assets to achieve mutually beneficial outcomes. That comes in by wanting to work more with our affordable housing mission-based organizations. But it also comes in where Met Council has a pilot that they will be launching in September, where we can apply for funding for the low-income, sorry, not low-income, local housing initiatives account, homeownership. And some of the requirements in applying for that is they want to see long-term affordability. They want to see ownership, and they want to see racial equity as a front and center priority. We would be working to use these lots in this proposal to be able to apply for that funding, where we would also need to identify a one-to-one dollar-to-dollar match, which CDBG is one of those that would count as a dollar-to-dollar match. So basically, in strategy number three, not only leveraging the land that we own, but also leveraging to maximize assets for mutually beneficial outcomes when it comes to funding. And Bloomington would not be doing this necessarily by itself. Next slide. So the staff recommendation, there is a resolution in the packet, but that I am asking the City Council to waive the process of soliciting sealed bids with respect to the disposal of these RALF properties, that the City Council appoint the Bloomington HRA as its agent for marketing the RALF properties, while the city still maintains ownership of the properties, and that we would seek affordable housing-based mission organizations to develop and sell property for owner-occupied housing with long-term affordability restrictions. That is a minimum of 15 years of affordability. And that marketing and disposal is in conformance with the RALF program requirements. Lastly, that the City Council would consider an ordinance to dispose of the RALF properties, individually or collectively, because there are five lots, which must be approved by not less than five council members. This process would happen with the City Council considering an ordinance to dispose of the RALF properties. This would happen after, if approved this evening, after the Met Council approves all of the process, after it is marketed, after a purchase agreement is brought forward, that would all have to come back to the City Council for review and approval to consider an ordinance change to dispose of the RALF properties. Next slide. So I have a suggested motion, but I am open for any questions.
Thank you. Thank you for the information. Council, questions here? Councilmember DeLisandro?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Appreciate it. So a couple of quick, just clarifying questions. Would you mind going back to the prior slide for me? Okay, so waiving the process of soliciting sealed bids, that makes sense to me. I'm assuming that's because you have folks that you'd like to work with, and so why would we go with that, right? Okay, fair enough. The question around funding, so it sounded like there, we own the properties outright, so nobody's buying the land. Is that correct?
No.
Okay.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Sorry about that, Mayor, Councilmember. So we don't own the property outright. We received a loan to purchase the property and to remove the structure. All of these property, all of these lots had houses on them when we purchased them. However, because they had houses on them, we paid market value for a lot and the improvement. The improvement is now gone. So one of the reasons we have to get an appraisal is because we have to show what the actual market value is of the lot, which we are pretty sure is less than what we got a loan for. So the money that would come in has to go to the Met Council to pay back our loan. And we are asking, we would be asking them to forgive the difference if we did not get market value of what we paid years ago, which these lots were over $200,000 with the house on them.
Right. Okay. So the one-to-one match that you're kind of describing is literally, is really just the forgiveness of, would they forgive at proportional levels then? Is that the idea?
The one-to-one match, thank you for the question, sorry. The one-to-one match that I am describing is how we get to affordable homeownership.
Okay.
It would actually be some type of public investment. So CDBG, the $75,000 per property, is an investment into the property. It helps to buy the price down, so that when the buyer purchases it, they are not paying that full price. Market value in Bloomington is about $340,000. They are getting the houses for a little bit less than market value through a land trust program, because the land is under a 99-year lease. Habitat for Humanity has a little bit different model of equity sharing, and that they are able to use volunteers, and they are able to cut the cost of development because of how they achieve it. Then again, they are providing for an opportunity for someone who may not be above 80% AMI to purchase a home, but it doesn't look any different than the market value home that exists in Bloomington.
Okay. So I appreciate the explanation there. That helps a lot. The last portion of this ordinance, it sounds like you're asking us, when it comes back, it may be that each of these parcels is sold individually to different parties? Or someone might come in and ask for all five, or four out of the five, or whatever? Is that the, is that the sense for what you're trying to accomplish here? Is like, we could, we can go with one person or body, or we can go with five, or any combination of those?
That is exactly correct.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Council, additional questions? Councilmember Loman?
Thank you. I'll start off with a question I kind of pre-sent to you. Councilmember Carter often says that, you know, your zip code determines your life expectancy. And, you know, certainly, having studied, you know, planning and that type of thing, I always get concerned when we see properties that are close by freeways, you know, whether it be noise, chemical, and that kind of thing. And so I just, you know, and I know you guys responded to that, and I'll let you kind of respond in public. But I'm just curious about that, as we look to kind of go down this route, if we approve this tonight. How are we going to control for that, that we're not looking to place these folks that may be looking for affordability in some of the most environmentally impacted areas and reducing life expectancy?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor, Councilmember. So one of the things, as you had brought forward earlier, you had mentioned the health in all policies. And I do believe that is still being developed. However, the assessment of the health in all policies, like the racial equity impact assessment, centers on the burden-benefit analysis. And so here, the benefit is a critical one. It's affordable housing. So we wouldn't want to delay that, but also, it was stated that the location is the only one available. And that when we are working with RALF lots, they are all going to be next to highways. And so the, as a best practice to move forward with the project, while finding a way to mitigate the impact, such as education, resources, we can work to identify challenges and solutions along the way, as this is a first in quite a while, where we would be learning as we go, but we would also be making sure we are looking through that lens to consider that as we go.
Thanks. I appreciate that lens piece. So just moving down, having the opportunity to work for Habitat for Humanity a long time ago, I happened to see a Habitat for Humanity truck drive by my house today. It was kind of funny, kind of coincidental. And then also working at the Fed. And one of the criticisms that the Fed had of Habitat for Humanity was that once they build their house, one, the property is so well-built, and then it doesn't stay affordable. It's kind of the best building you can have. It kind of ceases to be an affordable housing piece, kind of moving forward. And I know that you've built into this a different process, but I get a little bit concerned when I hear 15 years for affordability. And then, you know, with apartments, we kind of buy 40 years. And so I'm just, I'm concerned about that revolving affordability for folks, so that we can keep some of these homes affordable for the long term. So we're not kind of, like we're doing with the apartments, we purchase it, and then it's kind of, kind of over. So could you talk a little bit about that? I know we're just getting started, so, you know, you got to start somewhere, right? So I totally get that. But I want to be concerned that we're able to be sustainable, if you will.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you for that question. So 15 years, I came up with that as the minimum, because that is the minimum for Met Council's funding that I would be applying for. So 15 years, the minimum. The other thing is that I am mentioning West Hennepin Affordable Housing Land Trust and Habitat for Humanity. Those are two different models. Not to nerd out, but West Hennepin Affordable Housing Land Trust is perpetually affordable. And it's perpetually affordable, because the land is removed from the overall property, and it's on a lease. And so you don't actually own the land, you just own the house. And then you have an equity share split when you do sell. And then there's requirements, because everybody's not going to fund a land trust property in terms of a mortgage. So that's where that's built in. Habitat for Humanity has an equity-sharing model that, once they get to about 30 years, they actually are losing money. And so it's technically long-term affordability in that sense. So one of the things that has been talked about through some of the regional, sorry, it's a fly. Some of the regional groups that I am a part of is that when the city is putting money in, considering deed restrictions that allow for affordability much longer. Basically, what that would look like is, if we're providing funding, additional funding for subsidizing the development, as well as possibly down payment assistance, then we could put a restriction in that the property must always be sold to someone that is income-eligible. Kind of like the racial restricted covenants, but for, it is, but for a positive reason. The racially restricted covenants went on for years until the state legislature made them illegal. We could do a restriction, a deed restriction, that would say that it just doesn't, it doesn't come off the property. And so that is something to consider. I would have to look at it more and propose what that language would look like, because Minnesota has some of the strongest property rights around the country. So just looking at that, what is that return on an investment if we are doing maybe $50,000, but we're restricting something for 80% AMI, which it's always going to go up. The income bracket's always going to go up. What's 80% today is not going to be 80% in two years. So if we're restricting something for 80%, we could look up, and we could say then, in 20 years, that's not really affordable. But we did it. So it's just something to consider. It is being talked about. I am talking about it with other, I was going to say players, but other cities and other policymakers. So just know that it is being looked at and considered on, if we really want to get to affordability past 15 years. What does that look like? What are the tools in our toolbox? But right now, how do we start with something that we haven't been able to do in quite a while?
Thank you.
Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm going to go back to Councilmember DeLisandro's question, just because I now want to make sure I fully understand. So we would, so we would sell the lots, we would pay back the Met Council what we owe. But then we would basically develop a public-private partnership with the developer. And we would apply or coapply for the Met Council. Now, I don't know where I wrote it down, but the funding that you were talking about that requires the one-to-one match, which we could use our CDBG, use our CDBG to do that, to buy down the affordability.
That is all correct.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you. I was like, I don't, taking notes here. So the only other question that I had, you know, you mentioned Habitat for Humanity and WALT, but I'm wondering, are you considering other organizations? I assume there will be like a whole outreach plan. Like, I think about the beautiful house on Penn that MACV, you know, partnered with the HRA to build, and all of the, all of the, I'm assuming you're going to be reaching out to all of those organizations.
Absolutely. Just Habitat has expressed interest, and that WALT is already working with us. But we have had previous partnerships as the city and/or HRA with MACV, with, sorry, I was going to call them BATSY. Housing First. They used to be the Builders Association of Twin Cities, sorry. As well as PPL. We have eight properties that the HRA participated in getting those properties, and they're still affordable to this day. And the original owners, I think seven original owners are still in them. And that does have a restriction on it, that they either have to pay back the subsidy, which was actually $80,000, or they have to sell to someone that is income-qualified. So yes, we would reach out to all the players to let them know that Bloomington has some opportunities.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. This is great.
Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of questions here. Just background. Am I right to understand, we purchased these properties, we tore the house down, and then we're going to sell the lots so somebody can build a house? And I don't mean that to be like rude, but why?
That is correct. Because, that is correct. Because we purchased the lots, because MNDOT could not. So MNDOT was not, is not able to purchase the lots that they need for the highway projects that they have identified. So we purchased the lots, but we had, we did so by obtaining, oh, okay, obtaining a loan through the RALF program. Now the lots are being released, which says, MNDOT said, oh, that plan we had about 15, 20 years ago, we don't need it. And so we could either let the lot sit vacant, we would still have to pay MNDOT back somehow, or we could move forward achieving some of our strategic priorities and our city goals by offering affordable homeownership. Carl?
Mr. Keel?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I think Erica pretty much got it right. More than 20 years ago, MNDOT had a plan, much like the plan that they have now for 35W and 494, which required the acquisition of these properties. And so over the past 25 years or so, the city, working through the RALF program, acquired these properties to help MNDOT when they finally got to the point of building the plan that they had. Then in recent years, we went through a redesign process. It was identified that we don't need all the properties that we acquired through RALF. Still need a bunch of them, but not these five. And so they are willing to consider release of these five.
Thank you. Just follow up to that. Why tear the house down if you don't, until you need the property? That's not on you. I understand what you're doing today. And it just, it makes absolutely no sense to me to tear the house down, because you think you're going to need it based on a plan that's
that's fifteen, twenty years out. Leave the house there for fifteen or twenty years.
Mr. Verbrugge.
Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers, I look at Carl since he's been around here longer than I have. And I see former Councilmember Elkin sitting there too, who knows a little something about this as well. I think, I think the, the philosophy for most cities is that we don't want to be in the business of property management. You know, now, at this point in time, I would say maybe there's a different conversation to be had, especially since we have an HRA that is, is working towards some goals that maybe weren't as fulsome before. So I think if the question came up today as opposed to twenty years ago, the answer might be different.
I would add that twenty years ago when we were acquiring these properties, we did not anticipate that it would be twenty years before we actually built the improvement. So I mean, it was, I think the timeframe at that time was five years or so. And I think it was felt at that time, it wasn't worth going into a, putting a new family into these homes if we have to kick them out in a short period of time.
Fair enough. I just, I appreciate the opportunity to take a look at it if anything comes up currently, if we maybe want to think about that differently. Other question along those lines, am I right to understand that there are two existing houses standing on Humboldt between three of the four lots? So two of them didn't get torn down? Are they not part of the?
That's correct. Those lots were not a part of Ralph program.
So those were, in all these cases, the city got appraisals on the properties that were, we would like to have acquired. And then we negotiated a sale with the owners. So those two properties, we did not, were not able to negotiate a sale. So they remained there. We did try to acquire those.
Okay. And for clarity, I think Councilmember Carter had asked some about this, but what happens if the sale is less than, the original market value is less than the current market value? Is the city on the hook to pay some of that loan back? And how much of it are we on the hook to pay back if it's less than market value?
Thank you. That is the question that was posed to Met Council. And so what we are looking at is that we would have the appraisals. And we cannot sell the property for less than the appraised value. So that is why an independent appraiser must do an appraisal on each one of these, each one of these parcels, because Met Council will not accept less than that appraised value. And they will accept more up to the original price that we paid, that we loaned, borrowed, excuse me, from them to purchase. And I think there was a little bit of lack of clarity on if we had excess proceeds, if we were allowed to keep them. Because we knew that the properties weren't going to appraise. We know that the, excuse me, we strongly believe the properties are not going to appraise for what they, what we borrowed against.
Just a couple more quick questions. So I appreciate Councilmember Carter bringing up MacV, and we talked about Housing First and all that. One of the things that I saw in this proposal seems to prohibit MacV from this, because it would have to be owner-occupied. And MacV has a model to serve homeless veterans and provide support services. So they would not be able to, at their initial point, be owners of that property. And I also know that they're looking for a location that they would be able to put multiple houses in the same area to provide a community of support. They found that very beneficial. And I would be hesitant to preclude them from this opportunity if there's a way to include them.
MacV could partner with some of the developers that are affordable housing mission-based. And we could look at what that model may look at to, may be to serve that purpose for homeless vets. And it could honestly be a model that might include the land trust, because how can they be able to afford to purchase a home coming out of their situation?
Yeah. And my understanding, I mean, they would probably meet the, the mission portion of this in terms of providing housing. I'm not sure that they would be able to, with their model, provide the ownership even through the land trust. And so that would be, that's the one hangup that I'm having, is trying to find a way for an organization like that, that's trying to help our veterans overcome homelessness, get the services they need. You know, I certainly support the homeownership opportunities, you know, I've been a strong supporter of that for a long time. But I look at this location, I look at this property, and I'm like, this looks really nice for what they're trying to do and what I've heard that they're trying to do in terms of a place, a location, that they can put multiple units on it. And I want to just make sure that they would have an opportunity to come in and see if it works out for them. And so I don't know how to, I don't know how to fix that at this point, because I don't think they can sell it to the, I mean, people that are currently homeless aren't, in any model, going to be able to buy a house.
I appreciate you bringing it up, and I think that, I trust Ms. Coleman to take that back and take it into consideration and figure out how this might be able to work.
But overall, thank you. And I appreciate the effort here to, I mean, we've talked, finding ownership opportunities for people, finding places for this, utilizing underutilized land. The whole thing makes tremendous amount of sense, other than the tearing the houses down twenty years ago. Not, that's not you.
Councilmember Carter.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a follow-up question to that point. Is there any risk that we would go down this path? And then in ten or twenty years, Met Council will say, hey, we need those properties back. And you need to tear down the houses and, you know what, like, and I'm like, not, I'm actually not being facetious either.
No, I'm not familiar with a risk, because we would have paid them off. So the, whatever they are willing to accept, we essentially purchased the land. And so to come back, they would have to use eminent domain and to use it against the city or?
Okay, very unlikely.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I have driven past those lots for a number of years and thought, this is a prime example of what we could do to redevelop and to, to look at those lots and then to look at the, the pile of rubble right now at 8400 Humboldt, where the old White Office building used to be. It's an exciting opportunity, I think, in that area to kind of reinvigorate or to put in some, some new housing and new opportunities for people. That being said, those lots are very unique. I mean, they're big, deep lots, and they've got a lot of mature trees on them. And I know they're right in a neighborhood, and I'm sure over twenty years, the neighbors got plenty used to not having anybody there. So I guess I would just encourage you to make sure, as we continue this process and continue to move forward, that we continue to involve the neighbors and the neighborhood in all of this discussion. No doubt in my mind that if it moved forward to development, I'm sure the houses, whether it's whatever partner we partner with, I have no doubt about the quality and the aesthetics and so on. But just to make sure that the neighborhood and the neighbors are involved and informed as we move forward. So.
Thank you.
Councilmember Delisandro and then Councilmember Nelson. Anything else to add to this?
No, and I appreciate, I love, I live right around the corner from there. And so, and I know people worry about health and all policy, but I, I live in a beautiful home that's literally three blocks from 35W, and I don't feel sicker having gone there for the last five years. So I appreciate everybody's concern there, but I care more about the mature trees and things like that, maintaining those things from an environmental perspective. And I think they do a great job. So hopefully we'll be, we'll have considerate, you know, developers there. I'd also, I also just think that, you know, dovetailing kind of the notion of density in this, you know, is there the opportunity for us to be looking at duplexes or quadplexes or other things like that on these lots to, to support, number one, affordability, but also to support some densification? In my neighborhood specifically, if you look at Aldrich, for example, or right along 86th Street, you know, those are duplexes and fourplexes and even condo buildings that then roll kind of into the single-family homes that are in the more middle portion of the blocks, if you, or the, you know, super block, if you will. You know, those, those kinds of transitional ways of looking at housing feel, you know, it's a lot easier to do that than maybe just slap a, you know, a six-story apartment building in the middle of that kind of thing, right? And so I think from an aesthetic perspective, knowing that neighborhood really well, I'd like us to think about, you know, or dividing the lots and making them smaller for the conversation we had only a couple of meetings ago, where we talked about the lot size, right? So I'm, we don't have to answer that, but I'm assuming those things are on your mind, and I just want to bring them up as, as things to consider. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I will say, they are on my mind, and I consulted with Glenn Markagard, our planning manager, which is why the staff report says a minimum of five units.
Councilmember Nelson, did you have a question?
Councilmember Delisandro asked it. I was just wondering if there's options in that regard, so.
Very good. Counsel, I think we've chewed this up and down. And Councilmember Coulter.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to note it for the record that I am not wild about Ralph as an acronym and suggest that we add to our legislative policies reconsideration.
Mayor, if you would allow me one, one minute too, I want to just clarify something so that there's no confusion. Rondo in St. Paul was a neighborhood that was, you know, basically destroyed by basically having a freeway go straight through it. And, and what I've, I've had the opportunity to study over many years, being a planning person, is just, you know, how cities typically concentrate those people of color around, you know, around freeways. And so I just want to make sure that this body and this staff is going to be careful when we look to do that. And I'm not saying that there may be some ill effects for that kind of thing. And I, I don't, certainly people have lived around freeways forever. But I want to be sure that when we put together a affordable policy and procedure as we look forward, that we're being careful, that we're not concentrating ethnic groups or minorities or people who are economically challenged around neighborhoods that are around freeways. And so I hope that's very clear and that everybody understands what I'm saying. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Counsel, we have a suggested motion in front of us. I would look for action on this. Councilmember Carter, were you raising your hand or were you waving away a fly?
I was waving away a fly, but I am happy to make the motion.
Councilmember Carter.
I would move to draft a resolution relating to the disposal of real property and appointing the Housing and Redevelopment Authority in and for the city of Bloomington as the city of Bloomington's agent for the purposes thereof. And I'm sorry, right off my sheet. Hopefully that was the same.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Carter, second by Councilmember Loman, regarding the disposal of real property and the HRA stepping into, as Bloomington's agent in this. Councilmember Nelson?
Thanks, Mayor. Just one last, one last thing. I just want to ensure that passage of this would allow us to work with a MacV-type organization if it made sense, even though it would not be owner-occupied, because it's not specifically in this motion, but it was in other parts of it. So I just want to clarify that.
Ms. Coleman.
I'm looking at our city attorney. Because the city attorney's office did draft the resolution, is there a need to update that resolution, Ms. Manderscheid?
Mayor members, I would need to take a read at it for that reason. I did not draft it. Someone in our office did, but let me look.
What I may suggest, Councilmember, and I appreciate the question. Rather than asking our city attorney to take a quick read and make a snap judgment, if we pass this tonight, knowing that if we need to come back and make adjustments to this, we could at a subsequent meeting.
Mayor, Mayor, I will say that we do say in the document, at the time the buyer is identified and the purchase agreement is reached for any or all of the Ralph properties. So we do make that statement in our "now therefore" clauses. But theoretically, could MacV be the buyer of the affordable housing?
Theoretically.
So I think it's all right, based on the circumstances of my?
I'm fine if there's analysis and, you know, you know, future where it says differently, that it, just if staff could come back and you see like, wait, this isn't going to allow us to do that. I just, I'm not saying it's the right opportunity for the city or for them, but.
Ms. Manderscheid, an aha moment?
Mayor members, we do say subsequently sell the property for owner-occupied housing with long-term affordability restrictions. So MacV would not be owner-occupied, correct?
No.
So the resolution in the pack, it would not allow for that.
So I, I don't know if, if it's something we could amend right now and/or if it's something we could just hold over to the next meeting and see if staff could look at language to do that.
Is there a deadline on this, or?
The application opens up in September for the Met Council, but that doesn't mean we have to have ownership of property in terms to apply and be a strong, strong applicant.
We have a meeting next Monday. How about if we do that? How about if we hold this over there? And, and see if we can craft some language that I think might meet the goals. I think you understand the goals of what we're trying to accomplish here. And then we'd, we have a motion and a second on the table. And so we could, we could amend that motion once we get the updated language next week, if that would be okay. Don't defer to Councilmember.
So then, so my next thing is going to ask you, Mayor, is should we then postpone this then? Postpone the main motion until next week?
Yes.
So moved.
If that is the proper.
So I'll move to postpone this till next week's meeting, which do we need to state the?
August fifteenth.
Second.
Motion and a second to postpone till August fifteenth. Any discussion on this?
If I could, I think I probably don't know enough to understand what's happening right now. But are we, are we trying specifically to set aside these three concurrent properties for MacV at this point? Because that's what it, and I don't even know who they are, so I apologize. I have to get up to speed on who they are and what they do and why they're important. I admit that I am surprised that the biggest advocate for homeowner-occupied housing is up here doing this. And so that's why I'm trying to make sure I understand what's going on, and I apologize. And not to call you out, Councilmember.
It's not my understanding that we're specifically saying MacV. What we're doing, I think, is just opening up a few more options. I think we're hoping to craft some language to open up a few more options. Right now, it's very specific to owner-occupied housing, to give us a couple other possibilities in the future. MacV is a, it's a, it's, it's a group home for previously homeless veterans, basically is what it is. And so there wouldn't be owner-occupied, an owner-occupied situation. It would be owned by MacV, which is, I can't remember what the acronym is.
Minnesota something for veterans. Veterans.
So they would be the owner, but the occupants wouldn't necessarily be the owner. And so we're just giving ourselves some more flexibility, I think, in this. I, it doesn't mean we have to go one way or the other. It might make the most sense to partner with ultimately owner-occupied housing. It might make the most sense ultimately to partner with a MacV or a similar type organization. So I think it just gives us a little bit more flexibility.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
If I might, Mayor, just to help, Councilmember Delisandro, as an advocate of homeownership, one of the things I see as part of the MacV mission is to help veterans get on their feet to get into homeownership, and they provide all the support services so that they can get there. And so I see it as a pathway there, as a, but, you know, like I said, I don't know if it's the right opportunity or not. And it's certainly not my intention in this to just reserve these properties for them. It's just to open that opportunity, if it makes sense.
So we have a motion and a second to postpone this vote on the motion that was previously made with the direction to staff to perhaps look at language that would provide more options, more flexibility in terms of how we approach this. Everybody cool with that? No further discussion on this. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven to zero. We will see you again next Monday. Actually, we'll see you again in just a moment here, but we will see this item again next Monday. Thank you very much.
We will move to item five in our agenda, which is our organizational business. And item five point one is the HRA assessment that we discussed, I believe, at our last meeting, two, three weeks ago. And we, we got the initial, it was back in June already? Wow.
June twenty-seventh, six weeks ago.
Where we got the, the official rundown as to what the plans or the hopes or the possibilities would be for the HRA assessment and the HRA repurposing. And now we're going to talk about the next steps, the implementation steps through the budget process. So, good evening all. Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Yes, so six weeks ago, we stood before you. We are missing one of our members, but making his debut appearance as the Assistant Port Authority Administrator is Jason Smith. So we have a brief presentation, really all new slides. We have a Venn diagram for those people that requested it. And so we will get the show on the road. So Matt, if you could bring up the presentation. And I believe you all received it this afternoon as well. So, yeah, we, we won't go into all the detail that we, to repeat ourselves. But as you know, we did do an HRA assessment. detail that we, to repeat ourselves. But as you know, we did do an H.R.A. assessment that took us through to the Opportunity Housing Ordinance. Then we started talking about the Port Authority, the Planning Division, and should we create an E.D.A. So you can go to the next slide. So here are the introductions, myself, Carla Henderson, Community Development Director, Jason Smith, Assistant Port Authority Administrator, Glenn Markagard, the Planning Manager, and Erica Coleman, who you've seen quite a bit tonight, our H.R.A. Administrator. I just wanted to reiterate kind of what our staff recommendations were. These have not changed from when we were before you. These are the same recommendations we took to the H.R.A. Board and to the Port Authority Board as well. Again, focus the H.R.A. mission towards the continuum of housing. Erica's going to talk about the missing middle housing, because that seems to be a question of how we came up with the 20 units or less. Consolidate the majority of multifamily and commercial redevelopment into the Port Authority. Port would add five F.T.E.s with three of those being vacant coming from the H.R.A. We would again decrease the H.R.A. levy to equal whatever we're going to increase the Port Authority levy, and then fund citywide creative placemaking with the Newport levy in the amount of $200,000. And now I'll turn it over to Erica.
Thank you, Carla.
Thank you, Ms. Henderson. Next slide, please. So wanted to show what the H.R.A. is proposing here. We are proposing keeping everything that we already do in terms of homelessness and housing instability, but expanding navigation services and outreach, and expanding housing needs. We would also be keeping everything under affordable rental, but we would be putting in port and H.R.A. concurrent meetings as needed. And then in affordable homeownership, this kind of gets to my last item, expanding nonprofit, single-family development, really prioritizing and working on that intentionally, the same way that we have worked intentionally on multifamily development. But it goes to affordable homeownership in particular, not precluding affordable rental, but a focus on affordable homeownership. Market value and home preservation, expanding energy improvements as well as down payment assistance. And part of this expansion for energy improvements in particular would be to focus more on the H.R.A.-owned properties as a model for the rest of the city and for the residents, and show what they can do. We do, H.R.A. does own 41 single-family scattered site properties between two different programs that we do rent out. And we can start with the energy improvements on our properties and make that the standard of what you can do. And so expanding that opportunity by bringing the H.R.A. in to focus more on that piece. Excuse me. And then service coordination and collaboration. This is coordinating more with public health, sustainability, human rights. As of right now, there are staff in the H.R.A. that are assigned to each one of these departments and/or divisions to be the contact. Housing is a key economic driver, but housing is a symptom, and it's an effect. So expanding our service coordination and collaboration, where we're working better together and getting at those different things. So like, public health, there's different policies that they are looking at, but there's also different action steps that they're looking at, especially around tenant health, renter health, excuse me. Sustainability, that goes back up to our energy improvements, but also how are we advocating and allowing for new developments and/or preservation of developments. And then human rights. The biggest one right now with human rights is Just Deeds. There's a whole event that Mr. Markagard has been on that committee and been involved with that will happen on Wednesday evening. The H.R.A. is going to be right there, front and center. And so really expanding these different opportunities for the overall health and benefit of our residents and of those that we serve, but working better together and allowing for that time by stepping back and consolidating the majority of the multifamily development with the Port Authority, where the H.R.A. is going to work stronger with its strengths. And that is the one to over 20 units. It's the missing middle. Missing middle housing is really that in-between of a regular, single-family home, detached, single-family home, and an 80, 100-unit multifamily complex. Who's doing the in-the-between? Duplexes, fourplexes, eightplexes. Where are those opportunities, and how can we focus to seek those opportunities out, to bring those opportunities for more housing stability and affordable, whether it's homeownership or rental, in Bloomington? Next slide. And so I had this question of what is the H.R.A. Board's role. And I have to say, I'm sorry I didn't mention it, because I'm not proposing changing it. So the H.R.A. Board role is currently and proposed with these recommendations to approve distributions from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, the H.R.A. Development Fund, and the H.R.A. NOAA Fund. Approval and oversight of H.R.A. programs, approval and oversight of the H.R.A. budget, authorizing acquisition disposition of H.R.A.-owned property, so not city-owned, H.R.A.-owned, and then collaboration with boards and commissions in fulfilling its mission. And again, our mission as the H.R.A., that is not changing, is to help provide affordable housing opportunities for those who are not adequately served by the marketplace, to coordinate the city's efforts to preserve existing neighborhoods, and promote development and redevelopment that enhances Bloomington. And I'll pass it to Jason.
Thank you, Ms. Coleman. So I'm going to quickly go over what this recommendation will do to changing the Port Authority. Currently, everything that the Port Authority does is basically going to stay the same. We're still going to work on economic and development projects within the South Loop. We're going to continue to work on the business development resources, which we already have programs situated with the city, from the open to business. We got our feet wet with the CARES Grants and Loans Program of getting out that assistance to our existing businesses. Within our micro-business, within the community development, we're currently trying to create a facade program, which hopefully we'll be bringing before this board or the city council here later on this year. We're continuing to do small business outreach, and we have a team right now working on the Business Incubator Center of the Fire Station 3. And lastly, our Creative Placemaking Director, she currently is focused on majority of her projects within South Loop. That is going to continue to move forward. Where we are adding is we're going to try to expand this citywide. So the Port Authority will be the agency, the one-stop shop. If a development is coming in looking for financial assistance, they would come to the Port Authority, and we would work directly with that developer during those negotiations. And we would be bringing it before either the Port Authority Board, or if we are looking to utilize any of the housing assistance programs, we would bring that before the H.R.A. Board as well to get their recommendation and approval before bringing it to the city council for any final approval that would need city council consideration. In addition, we would be focusing on taking over the commercial nodes. That was a study that was done back in 2017. We would continue to focus on that and try to move those projects forward by meeting with the property owners and seeing, is there interest with the development community to move any of those projects forward to get a development proposed. Business development, we're looking to expand that. Like I said, you know, currently, we do the open to business. We've done the grants and the pandemic loans, potentially opening up a Port Authority levy. We could potentially create additional grant funding where we could try to assist some of these additional small businesses or other programs that may be able to come out of this. And then lastly, as I'd stated, you know, we're working on the small business outreach. We're hoping to expand that and do that more. And as Ms. Henderson had stated, the Port Authority levy would also be setting aside about $200,000 initially for creative placemaking outside of the South Loop. And so hopefully, those programs will be seen within the next year. Next slide, please. The Venn diagram. I get the privilege of presenting this. So what this is showing is both, you know, what are the powers of the Port Authority, and what are the powers of the H.R.A.? As you can see, both agencies have quite a bit overlapping. Both are able to create a levy. Both are able to create financial incentive packages for development projects through either the creation of TIF districts. They're able to bond or able to borrow. We can also guarantee financing, both the H.R.A. and the Port Authority. We've worked on housing development, which Mr. Markagard will explain here in a little bit, mixed-use developments, and we both can own parking ramps. Where the H.R.A. differs a little bit and has key powers is they are able to own housing. They have the ability to create an LLP, to own a housing project, and they're able to have a no-bidding clause, no-competitive bidding clause for parking facilities if they are tied to housing. But if you go over to the left-hand side under the Port Powers, you'll notice three bullets down, the Port Authority has a little bit expanded ability where we can have a no-competitive bidding for all public improvements. So that goes beyond just parking facilities tied to housing. Additionally, the Port Powers allow us to work on projects outside of housing, so specifically just business development or industrial, similar to what the Port Authority just did with the SIC development. We are able to work on commercial development, and we're also able to issue general obligation bonds. Next slide, please. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Markagard.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Bussey, Councilmembers. Good evening again. So six weeks ago, we talked about the amazing amount of housing production, mainly multifamily units that we've seen in the last three years. And we also talked about how a lot of that new housing has been affordable. That shows up as a yellow in these bar graphs. Opportunity Housing Ordinance, Council adopted that in 2019, and you can see the impact that that's had on development of affordable housing. Next slide, please. And six weeks ago, we talked about the city's affordable housing goals and the amazing progress that has been made over the last two years. City is 77% on its way to those 10-year goals in just two years' time. Next slide. But we did not talk about the big role that the Port Authority Board and the H.R.A. Board played in that housing production. If we look back to 2010, the city has entitled over 4,700 dwelling units. And you can see how the Port and H.R.A. were both extremely involved in that housing production. The Port, over 1,700 units in terms of assistance, and the H.R.A. over 1,200 units. Next slide. And if we look more recently, since the adoption of the Opportunity Housing Ordinance in 2019, we've entitled over 1,800 units. And here again, the Port Authority has been very involved. Over half of those units received Port assistance, and then over 500 units received H.R.A. assistance as well. Next slide. And so in addition to the overall production, both boards have been very supportive of affordable housing. Every project the Port has assisted has included affordable units. And then all but one that the H.R.A. Board has assisted has included affordable units as well. So with this change or the recommendations in the assessment, affordable housing would be, you know, front and center, not changing at all with the kind of shift in from the H.R.A. to the Port. I'll turn it back to Ms. Henderson.
Thank you. So where have we been since June 27? We did present to the H.R.A. Board July 12, unanimously supported the recommendations. It was not without dialogue in a lot of it. And then we did go to the Port Authority Board July 19, and they approved it as well. Again, it wasn't a slam dunk. We had a lot of questions to answer and wanted to present some of the slides that came out of the questions that were arisen during those conversations. And so the next slide, want to tell you, show you the budget process, because we're going to ask for your approval this evening to move forward. But there are lots of steps to get us there. I won't go through all of them, but you'll see with the H.R.A. and the Port, as well as the role that this body plays, bringing our preliminary levies for both the H.R.A. and the Port on September 19, and then coming back on December 5 for the approval. So there's lots of opportunity to have dialogue as we move forward through this. And I think the next slide is the motion. So we're here tonight to ask you to support our recommendations and move forward with the implementation steps that we have put forward through the budget process, and we'll stand for any questions or comments you may have.
Well, thank you all for this, and thanks for the thoughtfulness that went into trying to do what we have laid out as a council, as a community, what the goals would be, and try to use the resources that we have to rearrange the resources that are there to do this most effectively. So I appreciate that. I appreciate the thought that went into it. And I do appreciate the discussions. I don't know the H.R.A. discussion, but we sure had the discussion at the Port Authority. And the Venn diagram did come up. But it was a helpful discussion, and it was a good discussion, I think, to try and work our way through all of this. So I'm supportive of this. I think it's a good path forward. I think it's a different look at a problem that we've had for a while, and, not a problem, but an opportunity that we've had for a while to do more in this area. And I'm excited to see where this leads us. Council questions, comments? Councilmember Carter, and then Councilmember Martin, and then Councilmember DeLisandro.
Thank you, Mayor. So I also am supportive and excited about these changes, and I see there's a lot of opportunity in front of us. I am curious, as it relates to the Port Authority. You know, obviously, the South Loop has been a very specific focus. If you go to our website and you look at the Port Authority webpage, we say that. And I know we've had conversations around revisiting our strategic plan for the Port Authority. And I guess I'm curious, what are the next steps with that? Obviously, it would make sense to wait until we have a new administrator in place. But I guess, any thoughts that you have on kind of the future of the Port Authority as it relates to its overarching strategy?
Sure. Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Carter, Shane and I talked about the strategic plan for the Port Authority before he departed us, and he's coming back in a couple of weeks. So we do want to wait until the new person is on board, but we definitely believe that we do need to go through that process. And so timeline is to get somebody on board this fall, hopefully, and then work with the Chair or the President of the Port Authority to kind of put out a timeline for that. And Jason, did you want to add anything?
Yeah. Mayor, Councilmember, I think, I mean, definitely what Ms. Henderson had stated. I think additionally, we're going to continue to move forward on development projects right now, like we have been. And we're starting to start the transition process, with which we understand that developments are coming in in other parts of the city besides South Loop. And so the Port Authority team is starting to sit in on those conversations. We're also starting to sit in on a number of the discussions regarding other opportunities to assist businesses throughout the entire city. And so our team is looking at that, and we are preparing for that transition and waiting for the new administrator to get hired to then work on that full plan.
Great. Thank you.
Councilmember Martin?
Thank you, Mayor. There was a slide showing some of the new work that H.R.A. would be taking on, including, I think it said, service coordination between public health sustainability and human rights. So is that service coordination for folks that are using H.R.A. programs and services as the front door to the city, and then referring them across those three bodies? Or is that going to be projects, all kinds of stuff that we're coordinating now?
Thank you, Mayor, Councilmember. It's both and. I do want to say that the H.R.A. is in a very unique position, because a lot of the opportunities that come forward through public health in particular, our clients, our participants of multiple programs, whether rental assistance or homeowner home improvement loans, could benefit or use and just have that connection. So this is an opportunity to collaborate a lot better and to have more conversation. But then also, the conversations and the facets of housing have become very broad since the pandemic. And so literally, every last one of those entities has a role that impacts and/or benefits housing. And so when it comes to the H.R.A., just wanting to make sure that we're working smarter, we're working together, but we're truly showing up and modeling one Bloomington.
And briefly, if I may, Mayor, I know in the first presentation we had seen, and this was also mentioned in the presentation to the H.R.A. Board, there was... this was also mentioned in the presentation to the HRA Board, there was kind of serving as a one-stop shop for referrals to outside services and resources. So, I say, somebody's coming through HRA, we're making those referrals, but somebody's also coming through Public Health, but it might not touch HRA programming. I guess, is there going to be one central clearinghouse we're envisioning at some point, or is this going to be each department's making handoffs?
Thank you for the question. Haven't exactly thought of one. More so, what I have thought of is access to the opportunity. So, what does that look like? Right now, we're in two to three different buildings. So, even if somebody's coming through Public Health, they may not come over to Civic, well, to this building, to be able to understand or know what's being offered. Or if they're coming to the HRA, they may not know what's being offered at Public Health or at Public Works where sustainability is. And so, initially, I'm thinking how we can make sure that that information is advertised through, whether it's our webpage or different materials. But secondly, how can we be, provide access to the opportunity and be accessible? Further down the line, I don't know if it would be a clearinghouse, but what does that look like to benefit Bloomington, and what does Bloomington need?
That makes sense. Thank you very much. Councilmember DeLisandro?
Thank you. I don't know if, my first question is a dovetail or a repeat of Councilmember Carter's, but, so I apologize if that's the case. But I think when we talked about this before, I was curious as to why we were doing an HRA assessment, but we weren't doing a Port Authority assessment prior to making these decisions, because it kind of indicated that Port Authority was working just fine, and we should just expand it. We didn't really have that same assessment process. I don't know if that is what you were referring to, Councilmember Carter, but I'm curious as to whether or not we should still do that. And if we're not doing that before we do this, are we going to do that before we make other wholesale changes at the Port Authority level?
Mr. Verbrughe?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Councilmember DeLisandro is correct that we did not identify a Port assessment when we identified the HRA assessment. I would say that we were intentional when we began the assessment for the HRA to make sure that it was a comprehensive review of our development capacity. And so, that's why you see standing before you the folks who you do, because we recognize that there's a lot of intermingling of the work that occurs, and the projects that we have, there's a lot of, there's a fair amount of crossover. So, I don't want to say that it ended up being a de facto Port assessment. I don't think that's the case. But it was, I think, a full assessment of how we approach development and how we can continue to do it better. So, I think if there is a strategic planning effort that occurs with the Port, with the arrival of a new administrator, is, I think, asking the questions about what the Port is intending to do going forward, some of those questions that you may be asking are appropriate at that time.
Thank you. Second question, dov, I guess, the counter to that, is that for the HRA, it seemed as though there is actually an expansion of responsibility, meaning that you're focusing in and then expanding in the places where you know, you know, you have the literal authority, but more importantly, the best interests of the clients involved. But you're take, we're taking staff from HRA and moving it to Port. So, I just want to double-check again, you feeling good that we can get all of this done with the resources that you have currently in place?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor, City Councilmember. We do. And the reason being is that what we are looking at expanding runs along the primary duties of the staff that we are keeping. So, the three positions that would be moving to the Port are vacant now, and so, we have not been using them to do the work. And there was a primary focus on development or, like, assistant to the administrator.
Yes, please.
I think, also, Mr. Mayor, if I may, Councilmember DeLisandro, one of the things that Erica has talked about is HRA is all on paper right now, and they are working very hard to get the system electronic, and that's going to save time. I've used the example of some of the inspections that are going on for the rehab program that are going to be picked up by the building inspection inspectors. That's going to free up staff. And so, I think we're starting, and we're starting to see some of that. And then, you know, we have had, we had one employee that had been here 26 years, was used to doing things a certain way. So, some of the changes that the administrator was implementing, perhaps were not met, you know, freely, you know, openly. And so, as we start to see, you know, new employees come on that understand that this is the role that will be taking, I think she'll be able to accomplish that and more, quite frankly.
Great. Appreciate the diligence of the thought process there. Appreciate that. Last question. I know in many cities, as a requirement of funding, oftentimes, or even of approval, maybe even without funding, requirements for public art and placemaking are included. I don't know that we have something that strongly worded in our stuff, but you alluded earlier in the conversations around creative placemaking that we might be considering that. I'd love to either know a little bit more about what you're doing, or if we're getting to a point where we are going to require a certain portion of a property's land or whatever dedicated to that, or something like that. Where are we at with that? I would love to know if you've got some ideas there. Thank you.
Sure. Mayor and Councilmember, currently, right now, our Creative Placemaking Commission has not created a policy or within our development with regards to requiring public art or creative placemaking within projects. We do have incentives within the zoning code currently, where in lieu of either glazing or windows, that they can reduce that requirement by putting in public art. And so, there is encouragement within the code that does allow that. And I think, you know, as the Creative Placemaking Team, right now, it is one person. And so, we will see where this goes and where the commission takes creative placemaking citywide, and most likely, her staff may, or her team may need to increase before looking at doing requirements. But we are starting to see actually some private developments do creative placemaking on their own. And we're seeing that actually in the Bloomington Central Station, the next phase here. That project, they're looking to move forward with creative placemaking with the assistance of the commission and helping to pick and pick the artist that would move forward.
Great. Thank you.
Council, additional thoughts, questions on this? Councilmember Nelson, then Councilmember Loman. Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you. Two quick ones, just in terms of the Port Authority taking over some of these. I noticed, I've noticed this for a long time, that when you go into the Agenda Management System, the Port Authority meetings aren't mentioned in there. Is there any way to get those in there? No, they're not. They're on the calendar, but they're not in the Agenda Management System. They may show up later, but they aren't right now. And all of our meetings are going forward. HRA, I think, are. Other places, other commissions are.
That's where I fetch the agenda items when we have a Port Authority meeting, but we only meet monthly, so it's possible that... Yeah, I think they have to be there.
Okay, so we have a September 6 one, and here's September 7, and there's no Port Authority. I know, I think they show up later. They're just not in there.
Ms. Manderstein?
Mayor, I think I know what you mean. When, there's a internal process by which they create the agenda. And then, when they create the agenda, then it populates in this chart here. So, there may be, Matt may be creating all of these, and Ally and others who have their agendas already timed out and the dates that they already have already planned. They have prepared those and sort of launched that process. The Port, we will work on making that a part of their process, too.
Okay. Thank you. I assume they showed up, because I've seen packets as well, having been to joint meetings and stuff. So, but I just think, you know, it's all in one place, easy for people to find, see what's coming up there, instead of having two different calendars. A minor point on this. You brought up some slides with regards to the tax support for development, and frankly, those slides startled me. I looked back, you had the historic one, and it seemed like taxpayer support was maybe a third, and, or at least market. Projects that didn't require any taxpayer support were at least a third of them, and it significantly dropped off in the last few years from what I saw in those charts. Am I correct about that? So, there, that first slide showed, I'm not sure of the timeframe, but I think pre-2019, and then this one shows after we did that. So, you know, the largest group needed no assistance from the community to get, to move forward. And then, after we did it, the vast majority of projects received assistance. And I got to tell you, for me, that's startling and problematic. One of the big reasons that I saw the Opportunity Housing Ordinance would by itself be able to, you know, reduce costs and help development forward without taxpayer support, and I just frankly don't know that that's a sustainable way to go forward. And there's probably people in the room that are much smarter than myself on housing and what it's going to take to fix our housing market. But I think that's really something we need to take a serious look at, because, you know, if every project is requiring assistance, or most projects are requiring assistance, you know, that's not a model that we can continue to rely upon going forward, in my mind. And so, I appreciate you sharing that information, because I think it's very enlightening. I don't know how it applies to the Port Authority versus HRA versus whatever, but I would ask that the Port Authority take a very serious look at that and find solutions to that, because that is a significant expense for the region and the community. And so...
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, Councilmember Nelson, if I may, I think one of the things that you have to remember with the Opportunity Housing Ordinance is that we are intentionally trying to create more units at the lower AMI. And so, the projects that have been coming to us before have not typically provided those types of units. And so, the OHO is trying to broaden the number. And as you know, since you work in the business, trying to get homes at the 40 to 50 to 60 AMI is exceptionally challenging right now in the current environment. And I think that explains why you see that difference from 2010 to 2019.
If I might, and with all due respect to Mr. City Manager, most of the units we've created are at 80% AMI. We've created a very few of our targeted ones at 30%, at the very lowest part of it. You know, candidly, and I've said this before, I think we've spent a tremendous amount of money to create workforce housing, and we haven't addressed the most basic needs for people that really are struggling. You know, we're at nearly double of our 10-year plan goals for 80% AMI, and at 10% at 30%. I'm just making those numbers up. I don't have them right in front of me, but they're probably somewhere close in line. So, if it was such that we were getting way more 30%, I would completely agree with that assessment. But I think that we've utilized a ton of financial assistance to get a lot of, yeah, see, this, I mean, we're three times at 60%. Now, that's better than 80%. I said 80%. This is 60%. So, I'll correct that record. But even so, my understanding before we passed it is, you know, our goal, and this is actually something that, if we could get more information on, I appreciate it, we were producing 9% affordable units prior to OHO. And that was part of the analysis of moving that program forward. And then, we set a requirement for 9%. Are we getting more than 9%? How much more? You know, is that really moving the needle on what we're trying to do? Because, you know, and maybe it is, but it's a huge concern for me.
Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. So, I guess I would just maybe say we need to flag this for a deeper conversation. Seems related, but kind of separate. And I also, I thought it wasn't that long ago that we made some changes to the OHO, understanding that we were seeing higher numbers than the 60%, and that we wanted to shift the incentives to encourage more at the 30%. That was in the last three or four months?
That was the case, yes.
But I agree that a broader conversation, kind of looking at the data and how things are going, would be welcome. But I just wanted to make sure my memory was correct.
You are correct. But, and you're also correct that, yes, this is a larger conversation, I think, than what we can have this evening. But I think you bring up good points, Councilmember Nelson.
So, Mayor, am I ready to, or?
Councilmember DeLisandro?
I just want to, thank you, Mayor. I just want to point of clarification. Could you go back to the two pictures that Councilmember Nelson brought up? So, if I'm doing the math correctly, right, so this is 1798 divided by 4739, which is approximately 36%. And if we go to the next one, 375 out of 1829, which is more like 21%. That's the concern that you have? I just want to make sure I understand. Okay. When I heard you say it before, I thought you were saying that the vast majority of the properties were built with no assistance, and 36% is not the vast majority. So, I just wanted to clarify that. Is that, are we on the same page?
If it's all right, my thanks. Yes, we're on the same page. I felt like about approximately a third. They all looked about the same in the first one, so about 36, 33.
Okay. I appreciate, thank you. Appreciate, thank you.
Councilmember Loman, my apologies for skipping you over.
Oh, that's okay. I think it was all germane to what was going on. Just want to make sure you forget me completely. Just two questions here, or maybe it's more, we'll see here. Maybe this is more so for the City Manager. So, what I thought I heard when we talked about this before was, we're going to see a reduction from a taxpayer, from a budget perspective, when we make these changes. And so, first, I want to kind of confirm that that is kind of what we're going to see. Not that that would make a difference whether or not we're going to do this or not, but as we look forward, you know, I think the last conversation we had, the last time we were together, we talked about tails. And so, I'm curious about, as we kind of do this, do you see other tails that will grow and will impact future budgets? You know, sort of like we, you know, we looked at the Capitol when Lori was here, I think, last year at the end of the budget. So, when we make these changes, you know, is it going to stay the same? Is it going to, you know, increase what we're doing? You know, is that a function of moving these two departments together? Or is it just a function of the expanded programs in which we're working towards trying to do? Just help me understand, you know, as I'm looking at that from a budget perspective.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, Councilmember Loman, I don't think at any point in the process, we said that our intent was to lower the levies for taxpayers. What we are attempting to do is to make this transition without increasing the impact to the taxpayer. And so, we are going to lower the HRA levy, which has been at its maximum levy amount for a number of years. And there currently is not a Port Authority levy. We are authorized to have a levy. We have never turned that levy on. And so, we are essentially going to bring one down and bring the other up on par, so that the impact to the Bloomington taxpayer will remain unchanged by these, by these transition plans. In future years, that's going to be up to the council and the Port and the HRA to determine what the appropriate levy is each year.
So, then, just by virtue of making this change, we're not looking to make any increases, as it would say. Basically, keep it flat, kind of moving forward. So, then, kind of just moving on, then, you know, as we kind of look at these programs and changing them and kind of, you know, I like the little diagram, the Venn diagram we saw there. So, there's a change in terms of how we're bringing these things together. Do we foresee any, you know, if we were to pass this thing and move it on, any changes in terms of commissions or work groups or how that structure is operating? Some of the things you've seen in other cities that operate, you might say, hey, you know what? We no longer need this commission, or we need to change the focus of that commission, or just, you know, kind of forward as we're doing it, as we have been doing it. So, just curious in terms of, has there been any innovations in terms of, well, maybe we're missing a commission or that kind of thing. So, just curious about that.
Mayor, Councilmember, I will say, in terms of the HRA, I foresee no changes to adding a commission, and we are a statutory board. So, our board, the only change that we will have is, as you approve this evening, is increasing from five commissioners to seven.
Mr. Mayor and Councilmember, similarly, a statutory board, and really, it is... Mr. Mayor and Councilmember, similarly, a statutory board. And really, it is, most likely, we're going to be having more meetings than what currently happens with the Port Authority. And so that was relayed, and we will definitely get that on the Agenda Management, Councilmember Nelson, to make sure that everyone is aware of our meetings.
Maybe I'll ask it a little differently. Is this the way that development is handled in every other city? You know, are there other models by which that we could look at to try to, you know, at the resident level to get a different, a different take? Maybe I'll throw it that way.
Mr. Verbrugge?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers. Councilmember Lohman, I think the answer to that is there aren't very many cities that are like Bloomington. We have developmental powers and authorities that far exceed most other cities in the state of Minnesota.
And I think also, Councilmember, as we have been talking through this, and some of the things we've brought up over previous years about development, about how can we, for example, jumpstart the neighborhood node, you know, the commercial nodes, all those different things, I think as we continued those discussions and as staff started to think about them, you're asking about changing commissions, changing boards and so on. I think community development, the HRA and the port, I mean, they kind of fit together perfectly. And we did make those changes within them. I don't see it necessarily extending to, and correct me if I'm wrong, sustainability or the Human Rights Commission or those type of things. I'm sure they'll continue to work with them in a number of different ways. But just because of the nature of the work of these three kind of organizations, and in particular, the port and the HRA, it just, I think it made the most logical sense that they would, they would be affected, or they would be subject to this type of change, just again, based on what we've been talking about over the past few years.
Oh, no, that makes total sense. And I think that that's where I thought there could be some intriguing changes, you know, where you got sustainability, human rights, maybe there's some way of pulling those together differently and some innovation there. But we're not there yet. So, you know, we gotta kind of put this thing together and then kind of let it go down the road. I'm kind of too far ahead of myself here. So I think I'll just shut up and watch the process happen.
Good enough. Counsel, anything additional here? If not, we're looking for a motion to support the staff recommendations. Councilmember Martin?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to move that we support the staff recommendations from the HRA assessment and move forward with implementation steps through the budget process.
Second?
Motion by Councilmember Martin, second by Councilmember Carter, to support the staff recommendations from the HRA assessment and move forward with implementation steps. Any further questions, Councilmember Martin?
Thank you, Mayor. More just a quick comment. And I mentioned this briefly before, but just this body moving forward, I know we had great discussion at the HRA level about working on the missing middle housing. And to the broader points about how broken the housing development market is, missing middle really feels like a keystone in putting that whole arch together. But I'll just say, for this body, I have tremendous confidence in the teams that are in front of us to get this done, but without us having a serious conversation about zoning in the community. And especially to Councilmember DeLisandro's earlier point about transitional density, moving away from areas like commercial nodes, we're not going to have anywhere to put this missing middle housing if we dump all this time and effort into developing the policies to get there. So I am enthusiastic and very excited to support this. But I will say, this is also a tremendous bandwidth commitment in terms of all the other things that are gonna go along with this, so.
Our staff, if they've got nothing else, they've got bandwidth. We have a motion in a second. We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero. Thank you all, very much. Item 5.2, our City Council Policy and Issue Update. Mr. Verbrugge?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers. As you are aware, and I'm sure at least one of you is probably going to mention, we have Pride coming up on this fine Saturday from 4 until 8:00 p.m. And I did want to just address a question that I've had from a couple folks, and that's just about public health concerns, recognizing that COVID has not necessarily abated. And we also have a new, newly declared public health crisis in Monkey Box. And checked in with our public health staff and the staff that is doing the planning. And we are very confident that the protocols that we have in place and the facilities that we have here are going to be sufficient to ensure public safety for folks. As hopefully you know, and folks who are maybe watching, may or may not understand, Monkey Box requires relatively close contact for a period of time. And we don't think that any of the activities that are currently planned are going to put people at risk for that kind of exposure. We also want to encourage people that if they do feel unsafe, that they are welcome to wear masks, especially with COVID and being in crowds. So we do not require masks, but we always encourage people to take steps that they feel are necessary to protect themselves. So we will have hand washing stations. We'll have signage just reminding people. And we're confident we can hold a safe event this weekend, and it's gonna be a fantastic event.
Thank you. Any questions regarding Mr. Verbrugge's comments? I will report from our listening session tonight. We had two speakers. Ms. Sally Ness came forward with questions regarding a conditional use permit from about 10, 12 years ago and usage times of the facility at 8201 Park Avenue. We continue that conversation as we have over the past couple of months in our, in our listening sessions. And Mr. Andy Thule had questions about customer service in our dispatch center, a negative interaction that he had, and reported that he heard from somebody else about a negative interaction. And we'll be following up with, with our folks in public safety regarding the customer service in dispatch regarding that. I wanted to report a couple of things, Counsel. First of all, obviously with the news last week out of the Mall of America, the incident over there, can't say enough good things once again about the work of the Bloomington Police Department, not only in managing that situation, but in their follow-up, their investigation. As they moved forward, we had, I saw, I sat in here and watched Chief Hodges earlier today do a press conference where they updated the fact that three arrests have been made for people who have been, who were, who are, I think, charged with, with aiding or in the bedding or aiding the shooters in this incident. And the search continues for the two suspects. And so I have full confidence in our Bloomington Police Department and full confidence in the leadership of Chief Hodges in terms of not only directing and guiding the police department and their work, but also in his demeanor and his leadership in this, and his assurances to the community about the safety of the Mall of America and of Bloomington just in general. So hats off to all of those folks. Hats off also to the folks at the Mall of America. There's a reason why our police department drills and works and coordinates with the security staff at Mall of America as often and as rigorously as they do. And just to watch it in action is impressive because it keeps people safe. And we owe a debt of gratitude to both of those groups for working together so closely in so many different things. Also wanted to report, we've been talking about, when the summer started, I think there was some concern, I know there are different groups that I was working with, there was concern about potential for a spike in crime over the summer. And it was looking like it might be a kind of a hot summer here in Bloomington and in the Southwest Metro. And the chief sent numbers out. So far, we have numbers from June, we just, I think he's still updating the July numbers. But the June numbers, this summer, we have 566, I believe that's arrests, or crimes reported. And those are 484 in Group A and 82 in Group B. And that's just the groupings of the different crimes. So 566 this summer. Last summer, in June at that time, there were 649. So despite these fears that there might be a spike in crime this summer in Bloomington, actually, the opposite has been true. It's come down fairly significantly. And again, my hats off to our officers, to our investigators, to the chief and his leadership team for all the work that they are doing to keep Bloomington safe. But this is, this is good news. I mean, this shows, I think, the commitment that the department has toward respectful law enforcement and the expectation setting that goes on with it, and the work that they've been doing. And I think it's just outstanding. And I'm very proud of them. And I want to thank them publicly for, for what they've been doing and the efforts that they've been putting in, because we're all seeing the benefit of it. So. Counsel, anything else to add this evening? Councilmember DeLisandro?
Y'all can get mad at me because I got a list, but I promise you, they're really fast. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, just for you, City Manager, if you could, do you, these are just timeline questions more than anything. So in 3.4 today, we went ahead and made the adjustments to the funding so that we, our strategic priorities. There were a couple of things in there. I think one was the Natural Resources Plan for $350,000. And then there's some of the studies that we had around traffic safety and the other things. Do you have any kind of timeline for when we would see either details on those or updates based on, you know, just so we know about when we might see the results of those things? And if we don't have it today, that's fine. I just wanted to ask.
Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers, Councilmember DeLisandro, specific to the natural resource projects, I'd indicated, I think, when we talked about it, that we were working with an engineering firm that was putting together several different possibilities. I actually don't know if they have presented those to staff yet, but I'm expecting that we will see those soon, if we have not already. So they will come back in the relatively near future, I think, for council discussion. Regarding the other items that were on that list, most of those are going to be, the projects specifically are ones that we are hopeful of completing in 2022. There are a couple that are specifically going to carry over into 2023 just because of some lead time planning that's involved. But the intent with that list of projects that was presented was, again, to start making some serious investments in improving our parks throughout the city, as well as trying to advance the council's commitment to several initiatives around sustainability and natural resources. And I expect we're gonna make some pretty good progress on that. We will keep you updated as we move forward on those when they are occurring.
And the, and the studies themselves in like traffic study, and I think there were a couple of other ones, are those also, do you expect to have the results of those studies this year? Or is that the intent anyway?
I do not expect that we will have the results of the study. What our plan is, is to have staff do the initial scoping and then bring the scope to City Council to make sure that we are on track. And then we'll proceed at that point.
Okay, great. Thanks. I noticed also in the agenda tonight that we had collective bargaining approval. Are we done with those contracts then? Do we still have anything outstanding as it relates to the contracts that we were?
Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers, Councilmember DeLisandro, we have reached settlements with all of our collective bargaining units. I can't remember if this is, oh, no, you're right. Sorry, we have not. We have one that's still outstanding. So thank you for that reminder. City Attorney's like, my group, so.
Right, okay.
The AFSCME legal team is still in process right now.
Okay, great. And then last question, timeline question is, I know, I didn't see on the, on the future calendar, when we would see there was any updates on the strategic plan? And I apologize if I missed that. So do you, when we think we'll be bringing that back here?
Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers, my intent is to bring it back yet this month.
Okay, great.
He was getting pushed here with some other priorities that we're working on, but I'm, it's not gonna be too much longer. We'll have it back in front of you.
Yeah, great. Okay. So then the two things that are substantive, one is, does anybody else, or is anybody else interested in having Dr. Kelly or someone from the public health team give us a quick update on Monkey Box here in the Bloomington area? I haven't heard anything in terms of numbers. Maybe it's not even on the radar, anything like that. But since it has been brought to the level of public health crisis, I also think that left to its own devices, it could be stigmatized, and I'd really like to avoid that. So let's get some real information out there from folks if possible. So I'm just wondering if, do we have anything that we might be able to present, if Dr. Kelly or his staff could bring something back to us on that?
We haven't seen Dr. Kelly in a while now, and I think we could certainly invite-
I don't, I mean, that's probably, he's probably very happy about that, Mr. Mayor.
I think I sensed Dr. Kelly at home saying, I'm ready for my close-up now, Mr. DeMille. So we haven't, we haven't seen him take a star turn recently. I think it's good, considering the heightened attention, not, not just focusing on Bloomington, just understand how public health broadly is responding to it and share that information.
That'd be wonderful. Thank you. Then the final thing is, we did talk about Penn Lake today. I've gotten a number of residents asking how we got here, meaning like just the process that the, that the program went through, and a notion of a postmortem, if you will, on like, what would we have done differently to potentially prevent us from getting into a situation where it went to judgment or whatever? I'm just curious if we have something drawn up, or if there's an opportunity for us to talk from a postmortem perspective on that so that we could do some learnings? Maybe there's, maybe it's related to what, you know, Councilmember Martin mentioned around zoning and some of the things we're thinking through to avoid any missteps that we might have in the future. Because obviously, you know, that was a project that went through its twists and turns. And I wasn't here for that. But I would love to know what we might glean from our experience there that we could take forward. Is that doable?
Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers, would certainly appreciate any direction from you. Any action that the council takes, especially when it comes to land use approvals, always runs the risk of encountering legal action. I think that in that particular example, the council was aware of what the issues were and what some of the potentialities were, and made a specific decision at that time. I don't know if there is a specific learning to come from that case. But that's certainly something if the council wants to discuss further, we can, we can try to frame a conversation around it.
Is it of interest? I don't, I mean, I, again, I wasn't on council when all of that went down. So I don't want to assume that there's something to talk about if there's not, but.
So Councilmember, are you thinking for the council's benefit or for the benefit of the public, to understand this a little bit better, how we got here?
No, I think that, I think that in terms of the steps that were taken, I think the public is aware. But, but I do think there's some open questions in the public's mind about what, what could have been done differently that would have potentially either made it go faster or not faster, or, you know, I mean, it's not very common, maybe, maybe I'm wrong about this, but it doesn't seem like we go to summary judgment very often as a, as a council. And so I'm just kind of curious if that's an opportunity for learning. Again, obviously, I'm speaking from no experience, so please share with me if I'm off base.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers, a city attorney would be open to having a conversation. And maybe after that, if you still think that there's a, if you still have an interest in having that conversation with the council, maybe come back and ask her at that time.
Okay, sure. That's fine. Thank you. That's it. I promise, I'm done.
Very good. Councilmember Lohman?
Thank you, Mayor. Couple things here. We're continuing to make progress on the organics adoption. I think last I heard, we were up to 24.4%, or almost 24.6, something like that. So we're nearing 25% adoption of that organics piece. Still getting several questions about that in emails. I'm sure other council members are getting that, those questions. I did have a conversation with Carl about that. And I know that they are working on putting together one weekly. And then I certainly will have some questions after that. And I know that we've got other council members too that are concerned about that as well. So I'll be looking forward to those details with respect to that. And the secondary item that I wanted to just quickly kind of talk about is, and I did talk with Carl a little bit before time here, we are getting a little bit late here. So I want to just mention that we're having trouble getting him on 106th Street and also on 102nd Street. Obviously, and we've, residents have come before me with these complaints about speeding and speeding zones and that type of thing. And then also, just some questions about, in terms of 106th Street, just some history on that. They want to understand how the road, is the road built just for trucks or for cars? Just, they're also experiencing a lot of passing in the turning lanes. And just, the speed is just out of control on 106th Street. And it's kind of a known issue. We kind of worked to conclusion for a while. I do know that we had some changes in, you know, in our leadership at the police department. So part of that could be part of it as well. And I do, just, just to kind of also point out, we want to kind of also have a look at 102nd Street too. I do know that things kind of pop up and go down, but we're kind of back at that point where folks are starting to. And I want to get ahead of that and just make sure we're, we're making sure that the speed piece is understood and that it doesn't go any further than that. I'm sure, Carl, if there's anything else, I know we talked to one of the residents today, but we'll just leave it at that. And then we can kind of, we can talk about that behind the scenes. Then I also wanted to just thank, really generally, the entire council for your continued support of sustainability. We had this past week, our celebration of sustainability, Councilmember DeLisandro was there. Thank you. Thank you for being there, and also Mayor Tim Bussey was there as well. We missed your words. Normally, you're able to say something, and then also our manager. And again, want to just thank our continued work for sustainability and in the community here, so thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Councilmember. Counsel, anything else? Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick thing, based on the Penn Townhome project, a number of people have seen, have been talking about the emergency exit, actually at the one hundred and eighth place, saying that people are utilizing that to go onto one hundred and Eighth Street. I personally have not witnessed it. I don't know if Councilmember Lohman has either. I know he doesn't live too far from there, so I'm just wondering if I could get a quick update from police, if they are aware of any issues with, and I don't need it tonight, it's kind of a very specific question, at some point, just to see what the veracity of those claims are and things like that, and if there is an issue, you know, what options we may have there. So I know that's a concern, and I know it was a concern at Penn as well, so just see if we can preempt something there.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, Councilmember Nelson, I saw similar comments, and those are new to me. I've not had those concerns that have bubbled up, at least to my level. So we'll check in with the PD and see if they've been getting complaints and if they've had any enforcement activity.
I appreciate that, and until this Penn Townhome came back to us, I had not had anyone ever reach out to me about that nor heard about it, you know, when I'm in the neighborhood, so it was a first for me as well, which is just why I brought it up, just to see if there is a history of it.
Very good. Nice call, counsel. No hands going up? I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Motion by Councilmember Lohman, second by Councilmember Carter to adjourn this evening? No further council discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero. Thanks much for tuning in this evening. Thank you to staff for your work. Thanks to the council. Good work tonight. Everybody have a good evening.